I got home, I got home from work at a quarter after eight. No, I'm gonna go there with the cordless drill. I'm gonna disconnect it and work there. I'm gonna move it out three feet.
Yes.
Bless.
This is not right, right? Today is the public hearing for Danny. Because I believe the notice was sent out. Danny, this resolution is to designate, to recommend to the planning board, uh, to recommend to the council to call it an area in need of redevelopment, not to authorize...
Yeah, this is the, right, this was the public hearing on the report.
Right, but then why does this say, "Resolution authorizing the township to undertake preliminary investigation study"? Right?
It's...
I'd like to call the order, uh, the May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Old Bridge Township Planning Board meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Daniel, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Agopian is absent, Ms. Cannon is absent, Mr. Renner?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. McGyserick?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
And Chairman Lauer?
Here.
Okay, we have a swearing of the...
Oh, yes. Mr. Chairman, I, as we do now, we swear in the board's professionals now at the beginning of every hearing, and especially because we have a public hearing on a redevelopment study. We have to swear in the planner anyway, so if you would all please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, uh, first item is, uh, minutes of April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have, uh, any questions about that? Ed Ferrera moved it second.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Epstein.
Mr. Agopian is absent, Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Epstein.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Uh, next item is a resolution, uh...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I apologize to jump in. Uh, the, the, uh, the agenda's a little off on this. It's actually a public hearing. It was been a duly noticed public hearing on a redevelopment study. It's for the, the same property, uh, the men, uh, the tract near the Menomino Park. Uh, it's blocks eight thousand five, lots nine point eleven, and eleven point eleven, and block nine thousand lot eight. Um, the planner had conducted, at, at a prior meeting, this board had adopted a resolution that's identified here, authorizing the planner to take, undertake a preliminary investigation on this property. Uh, and that has been completed, it's been circulated, uh, and it's been noticed for the public hearing this evening. So, uh, I, at this point, uh, usually how we handle these, we turn it over, the planner will make a presentation, and then we open it up to the public with any questions, comments, and then, uh, we close it, and then the board can take action.
Okay. Ms. Sawan?
Good evening, board members. I had made a presentation for, uh, when the resolution was passed regarding this area investigation study. Just to give you a brief overview, the study area is right next to the Menino Park redevelopment area, where currently we have Menino Park YMCA. This also, this area is actually sandwiched between the Menino Park redevelopment area, as well as what we fondly call the Segme redevelopment area. And, um, there are three properties that were left out of these two study areas. Um, the, uh, Old Bridge Redevelopment Agency realized that these, the two of these properties have been vacant. Also, the Blonder and Tongue site is currently underutilized, if you look at all the areas, or even when you visit the site. The, um, the parking lot is empty, and there has been no, um, uh, upgrades to the building. And, uh, the developer has also, uh, showed interest in redeveloping the site, so that site was included too. So, uh, the original request came from the council to extend the Menino Park redevelopment study area. However, it is my recommendation, because Menino Park was purely written for recreational purposes, I would recommend that we ca- create this as a separate redevelopment, uh, study area. It has a great potential. Currently, it's, uh, zoned for economic development opportunity zone, but by giving it a redevelopment designation and writing a plan, uh, that is cohesive with all the neighboring land uses and, uh, promotes more uses and attracts businesses there, I think it would make sense to have this as a separate, uh, study area. So that would be one of the recommendations to be included in the resolution, uh, if the planning board agrees with the determination. So, the original Menino, uh, Park redevelopment area was actually designated in two thousand four. Subsequently, the Township Council by Resolution, uh, seventeen dash two thousand five, adopted a redevelopment plan where, uh, Menino Park was redeveloped, as well as YMCA. Next slide. The three properties that are to be reviewed are block eight thousand five, lot eleven point one one, which directly abuts, uh, Old Bridge Madawan Road, or CR five sixteen. Block eight thousand five, lot nine point one one, which is setback. It's, uh, it is, uh, it's a lot that directly abuts Jake Brown Road, the improved portion of Jake Brown Road. We call it the Jake Brown Road South. Um, and then the third parcel is block nine thousand lot eight, which, uh, contains the Blonder and Tongue, uh, building. So, all three lots, two of them are vacant. Um, block eight thousand, lot nine point one, actually has a cell phone tower. You can see it in the aerial, it's at the corner. Um, and Blonder and Tongue has an underu- i- is an underutilized parcel with significant impervious coverage. Uh, and they're struggling to sustain, the building is very old and needs significant upgrades. So, applying the local redevelopment, and you can change this slide. So, again, these are the three lots, I already talked about them, next slide. Applying the nine criterias of the local redevelopment and housing law, both, uh, lots that are vacant, they, uh, satisfy, uh, criteria C and H. Um, the first lot would also, uh, satisfies criteria D, which is eighth lot, block eight thousand lot nine point one one. The last one, which is block nine thousand lot eight, it satisfies criteria DH and section three. Uh, it contains tellatarius land uses, has an absolute layout with significant impervious coverage. The lot lacks any landscaping, and, uh, also meets, uh, the, uh, criteria to, for an area in need of redevelopment. It is my recommendation that all three sites, uh, meet more than one criterias of the local redevelopment and housing law. So, if the planning board doesn't have any questions, I would recommend that they pass a resolution requesting the council to designate the area as an area in need of redevelopment, and again, create this as a separate redevelopment area. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Does anybody on my left have any questions about that? Go ahead, Ms. Ferrer.
Is there any wetlands included in this survey?
Yes, of course. There are, and, but that, the, the part of the land analysis comes in when I write the redevelopment plan. This is just the first step. This is just so that, uh, the area is designated as an area in need of redevelopment. Once the council designates the area, they would authorize me to write a redevelopment plan, or, uh, the zoning standards for that area, that's when I actually evaluate. But yes, I'm, I'm aware that there are wetlands there. No problem.
Any other concerns? Am I right?
One thought is... One thought or question is, is why the need to combine, why the need to combine everything? Why not just look at the redevelopment on block nine thousand lot eight? Obviously, that facility is under distress, it, it needs to be upgraded. That's an easy one to understand. The other two pieces are less developed, or not developed at all.
In fact, they are vacant, and under the redevelopment law, it allows you to de- include such properties that are vacant. Because if you, uh, I don't know if you know the history of those properties, but, uh, there have been applications filed in the past, like almost more than a decade ago, for development of those sites, and those developments were denied. We haven't seen anything come to fruition on those sites. So, by giving it a redevelopment designation, by writing a redevelopment plan, we will encourage some sort of development on those parcels.
But there is, there's no need for access from block eight thousand and five, lot eleven eleven, uh, to get to the third lot, which is the lot, which is block nine thousand lot eight. You don't need that pathway off of five sixteen to gain access. There's already access to block nine thousand lot eight, that's a question.
I'm a little confused with the question. Jake Brown Road South goes along, so what you see beyond lot nine point one one, that corner, that bend, there is another parcel. The zoning board approved many moons ago, uh, a development application, which was inclusionary, meaning there were some market rate units and there were some affordable units. It was part of our housing plan, third round housing plan. One of the condition of approval of that plan was that the developer would con- uh, would construct the bends towards Blonder and Tongue, and it would, so he would construct the roadway, and it would terminate into a cul-de-sac. But if you remember, when I wrote Segme's redevelopment plan, one of the condition of the redevelopers agreement, or if you remember, I presented an entire circulation plan wherein the developer for Segme was to build that connection. Now, it in fact enables me to, uh, complete that route, because that was in the master plan, written like thirty years ago. But we never had the funding to complete that connection, because it will be an additional route going to White Oak Lane, and then connecting White Oak Lane to Jake Brown Road East. Now, including Blonder and Tongue, including these pro- two properties, remember, we always correct, uh, transportation prorata share. And plus, if these sites are going to be developed, I can get the roadways widened, I can have them dedicated. Because when Segme was going to develop the road, they were going to develop it only until their property. The area is heavily constrained, they were barely able to get a thirty-foot roadway there. So now with, including Blonder and Tongue, I can get a wider roadway with, including these two vacant parcels. Whoever comes to redevelop the site, I can ask for prorata share. It helps us get that connectivity to White Oak Lane and Jake Brown Road East.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm looking to have a question. Uh, the, are all three parcels now under the same zone?
Give me one second. I believe so. Yes.
Okay, and now, i- the new zone, will, 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 will the new zone be the same, or are you, be the...
The whole idea is, it cannot be the same, because if it is the same, then what is the point of doing a redevelopment plan, right? When you write a redevelopment plan, you're making it more flexible. One of the issue with the current zone is, it is zoned as ETO one, where ETO one was envisioned to be smaller lots, like one acre parcels, right? These are much bigger parcels. So, with the one acre parcels, there is a significant limitation on what size of building you can put in. Whereas, when you write a redevelopment plan, it'll be much more flexible, and will be able to attract more users, or it'll make it more allowable to develop.
Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
Just silly question, I don't... Why are we redeveloping eight oh five, eleven eleven, and nine oh, and nine point one one? I understand lot, block nine thousand lot eight, the building's coming down, it needs to be fixed up. Why the, why are the other parcels?
I mean, they are two vacant parcels on a county road. They are ripe for development, but right now, the zoning standards have significant limitations. For last fifteen to twenty years, the owner has been trying to get uses. He has had few failed attempts in front of zoning board. So, redevelopment law allows the township to take interest and develop or write a plan that can include uses that we really want to see. And i- i- that is the only two properties that are vacant on five sixteen in that section. If you notice, the entire corridor is commercial, and these are larger pieces.
Is the gun club or the gun range there, right off of Jake Brown Road?
Yes. But remember, when we did the Se- Segme redevelopment plan, um, there is now going to be a warehouse on the gun club site. That was the last warehouse that the planning board approved. So, the gun club will probably relocate somewhere else, and there'll be a warehouse, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we open up to the public now?
Yes, this is for public comments or questions regarding the redevelopment plan that was just explained and testified to.
Does anybody have a question about? Okay, see no hands, I closed the public portion? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there, there's a resolution that has been circulated. Uh, it's entitled Resolution of the Township of Old Bridge Planning Board, recommending the properties identified as block eight thousand five, lots nine point eleven, and eleven point eleven, and block nine thousand lot eight, on the tax map of the Township of Old Bridge, be designated as an area in need of, need of non-convention redevelopment, and included in the amended Menino Park Track redevelopment area. If the board is so inclined to make, uh, accept, uh, Vina's recommendation and testimony, and make, uh, that recommendation to the Township Committee, uh, excuse me, Township Council, uh, you can make a motion on that resolution.
Okay, do I have a motion to move this forward?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, can, can you give me exact definition of what we're voting on here exactly?
Sure. Um, is, under the redevelopment process, for a property to be declared, uh, an area in need of redevelopment, meaning then it can be, uh, part of a redevelopment plan, uh, and proceed as a development redevelopment, enter redevelopment agreements with developers, and, uh, proceed under, or have a redevelopment plan, which is like an overlay zone, uh, placed on the property, it has to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. I mean, it needs, must meet one of the criterias set forth in the statute. That's the criteria that Vina went through. So, what you'd be voting on here, oh, let me take a step back. So the process is, if a property in town, uh, wants to be deemed, or the, the township wants to potentially deem a property in need of redevelopment, the committee, the governing body adopts a resolution requesting the board to conduct a preliminary investigation. The planning board then conducts that investigation by what we did a, a couple of months ago, adopting a resolution direct to Vina to do so. Then a public hearing's being held, and then the, um, on that, and then the board then either, uh, adopts a resolution, either recommending the property in its entirety, or a portion of it be declared an area in need of redevelopment. It's a recommendation to the governing body, because it's the governing body that then will actually make that declaration, that it is an area in need of redevelopment. So that's what, what's before, before doubt, is that step, is the recommendation step.
Okay, we have a, a, a motion, a second, uh, can we have a call for vote?
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
No.
Mr. Petty?
No.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
No.
Chairman Lauer?
Yes.
Six yeses, three nos.
Okay, uh, next, uh, we have an application tonight, uh, twelve dash twenty, twenty-two P. Alferi Old Bridge Associates LLC, major preliminary subdivision, major preliminary site plan with a C variance. Uh, represented by Mr. Petrino. Welcome.
Good evening.
Uh, Mr. Petrino, before we get started, I'd just like to let you know that you, you only got forty-five minutes last time. We're going to give you the whole night.
Thank you.
Till ten PM, yeah, for, for, uh, testimony, and the, the meeting's over at ten thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Frank Petrino, and with the law firm of Eckerd Seaman, Siemens, and we represent the applicant, Alferi Old Bridge Associates LLC. Uh, this, uh, board, uh, took jurisdiction in January, we had our first hearing on February twenty-seventh. Uh, just as a reminder, this site, uh, is a ninety-five acre site. It's located in the MU IH zoning district. It's designated in the township's housing element and fair share plan as suitable, appropriate, developable for, uh, inclusionary housing. And it has frontage on both Lawrence Harbor, Madawan Road, and beyond the avenue. Uh, it's designated on the tax map as block twenty-one fifty, lots four eleven and six thirteen. I couldn't find the street address, but those are the lot and block numbers. We are, back here, we were here in, um, two thousand twenty-two, uh, when this application began. Uh, we had some issues back there, there was a denial, and, uh, and then, um, the matter is being back, brought back to you pursuant to, um, a consent order that agreed that this should, that a Whispering Woods hearing should be held, um, relating to, uh, our application for subd- preliminary subdivision and preliminary, uh, site plan approval, uh, for phase one. Uh, that phase is the green and residential community, which we'll talk more about, uh, on lot A, and also for a, uh, parking lot on lot C. If, that lot, if the board were to approve the application, would be conveyed to the Bridgepoint, uh, condominium. They have some, um, parking issues at the condominium, so this would, uh, help to alleviate some of those. Just in terms of the specifics of the application, we're here to create three lots, A, B, and C. Um, the C lot, the parking, uh, uh, s- the parking area lot, um, uh, is only four point four one acres, uh, and it needs variances for lot area and lot coverage. Um, otherwise, the, uh, uh, preliminary site plan for phase one is, uh, for the approval of five hundred and twenty-nine inclusionary, uh, three and four-story, um, apartment buildings. There'd be four hundred and twenty-three market rate units, and a hundred and six low and moderate income, uh, units. The site plan application obviously, uh, describes things like, um, parking, uh, spaces made available, uh, s- other site improvements like landscaping, uh, lighting, uh, stormwater detention, uh, or management facilities, uh, and, uh, utilities to serve, uh, the, uh, development. In terms of the parking, there are a number of, uh, handicap spaces on site, thirty-five. We also have a hundred and, uh, fifty-six garage spaces relating to the four-story buildings. Uh, and we also have EV or EV-ready, uh, uh, parking areas. With the exception of a detention basin, uh, site plan approval for development of lot B, sometimes referred to as phases two and three, is not requested, uh, at this time. Um, at the hearing held on the twenty-seventh, Mr. Kachera, who's sitting next to me, was qualified to present expert testimony. Uh, he described the evolution of the plan, what it would look, what it looked like when you were reviewing it in two thousand twenty-two, and how it evolved, uh, including through the, uh... and how it evolved, including through the process of the two consent orders that were entered. Our architect also testified, Jack Rager. He provided expert testimony regarding both buildings, the 3- and 4-story buildings, elevations, floor area, I mean, floor plans, et cetera. This hearing, at the end of that hearing, it was decided that this would be a more technical presentation where we go through things like parking layout, stormwater management, landscaping, lighting, and other details related to both development on Lot A of the residential project and Lot B, Lot C, the parking area for the Bridgepoint condominium. The site currently has been graded. Basins have been installed and headwalls have been constructed. The site is maintained on an annual basis. Grass is cut, there's general cleanup. And there are silt fences out there, and if they're damaged or blown down, they're repaired. So a little, just again, a little more of the background. We filed a development application in January of '22. It was deemed complete in September of '22. The application was denied on January 26 of '23. I think that's actually when the resolution was adopted. Board, in that denial resolution indicated that the board found and concludes that the applicant's request for waivers and variances cannot be granted under the criteria of the MLUL. We filed a prerogative writ application in March of '23. In that, we alleged the application was fully consistent with the terms and conditions of the zone applicable to Phase 1 and the terms and conditions of the settlement agreement, which expressly provided for modifying the phasing of the residential and non-residential components of the project if construction of the non-residential component, meaning no market demand, would delay the completion of the inclusionary housing. There then was a consent order entered in early '24 where it was agreed that Alfieri could construct and obtain certificates of occupancies for all 529 units on Lot A before development of Lot B and to locate all of the units north of Whale Creek. We've had meetings with the county, New Jersey Transit, New Jersey Turnpike Authority on phasing of roadway improvements. And we'll hear more about, there's two phases of improvements along Madawan Road. Actually, what has been proposed at the county is more stringent than what was in the Alfieri settlement agreement. In the Alfieri settlement agreement, I think it said we could build the first 280 units before we did some of the Madawan Road improvements. Our discussions with the county are now that before we get our first CO for the first unit, all of the Phase 1 improvements would have to be done. Those are the improvements on our, I never know north, south, east, west, so I'm just going to say our side of the bridge. And then before we can go beyond, let me see if I can pick the number out. I think it's 265 COs, we have to have the second phase. So the phase on the other side of the bridge where the park and ride is. And that's the thing that I most think about when I think about that side. So maybe that helps you understand Phase 1 and Phase 2. There was a second consent order, and it attached a concept plan. The concept plan was a plan that was reviewed by this board before the concept, before that consent order was entered. And that order effectively said that all necessary variances needed to build the green as shown on the concept plan should be considered and granted by the board and that the board, because this is an affordable project, would not impose cost-generating conditions that would impact and inhibit or impede the development of the inclusionary development. And those are things like setbacks, spacing between buildings, impervious coverage, and open space. None of those issues are anything that the board is, or the board's professionals have brought up to us. So that, that's just language in the consent order. And it, I don't think there's any issue that there are cost-generating conditions that we're being asked to comply with. We did, we filed our application in October. I'm not going to go, I have a paragraph from the letter, but I'm not going to go through it. The only thing I want to point out again is this, this application is for Lot A, the green, which is the 529 units, and Lot C, which is the, a parking lot that we've agreed to build for Bridgepoint and also convey that lot to Bridgepoint. We've gotten review memos from the staff. We got two in January. We had a Zoom meeting in, on January 9th. We had a second Zoom meeting with DNR, or DRC, I should say, on February 13th. We got a second draft memo from, no, I'm sorry. We got a second staff review from the, your professionals on January 21. We got another one on January 24. We were here on February 27. We've submitted revised plans with all the technical issues that were not in, at least to the satisfaction of your engineer, were not in the original site plan submission and subdivision submission. That submission was 16 pages. I think this one is 36 pages. So we've added all that detail. We submitted a new stormwater management plan, and we submitted, I don't know if it's new or revised, operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater facilities. We did get a memo recently from the fire marshal, and we got a staff, a new staff report on May 14th. I don't know, Joe, Mr. Sirdillo, we didn't get that, we didn't get that memo in time to have a response in 10 days before the meeting. I did submit to you and the planner, and I think to Dan, a memo dated May 29th. It's a one and a half page, one or one and a quarter page memo with a couple attachments. And I'd like to make that part of the record, even though it wasn't submitted 10 days before.
No, 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 it's, it's May 19th, just correction. I think you said 29th by accident.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Hey, I just won $100, my first scratch-off, and I won anything.
Yes, absolutely. I think just when we, because the board doesn't have it, when we get to the points of maybe going through the report, we'll just make reference to those. I mean, there's not, I think we can easily just quickly read through those and those points when we get to that, that point in the testimony. But yes, absolutely, that can be considered part of the record. But I just, the board needs to know it since they haven't got distributed it yet.
Oh, okay. All right, the only other thing I wanted to say before my friend here is going to resume his testimony is we do have certain approvals or pending approvals. We have a letter of interpretation on our wetlands that would expire in October 2025, but can be extended for four, five years. We have a CAFRA, we have freshwater wetlands, general permits 11 and 2. 11 relates to drainage structures, 2 relates to underground utilities. We have a transitionary waiver averaging plan and a water quality certificate issued by DEP in February of 2022. And we have a pending application with the Middlesex County Planning Board. We have a very conscientious reviewer who keeps asking for more things. So we're, it's still pending, but we're trying to get it heard on June 8th, I think. So unless you have any questions for me and my filibuster, I'd ask redeemed to, who was sworn and qualified and remains under oath, to go through, he's going to talk to you about the technical aspects of the plan, landscaping, lighting, a lot of different things, and then go through the comment letter. Why don't we go through that testimony? And then when he gets to the comment letter, we can go back to this.
I think that's probably the most cohesive for the board.
Okay. Mr. Kay, why don't you go forward?
Thank you.
Is it okay?
Yes, yes, I just, just for the record, you do recognize you are still under oath.
I do.
Yes.
So good evening again, and my name is Radim Kuchera. I'm with Civil and Environmental Engineering. And we prepared the plans, a set of plans presently in front of you. If you don't mind, I would ask for the existing conditions plan to be put on the screen. And I'll try to be as quick as possible because you've been introduced to this, to these facts several times. What we are actually looking at right now is a property in the southwest corner of New Jersey Turnpike and Madawan Road. And if you don't mind, I would, I can point, you know, use my pointer, but it would be only on one screen. So, let me get oriented here, I'm a little bit... Okay, Madawan Road up here and Parkway along this side of the, of the property. The property perimeter extends like this and borders several development to the west, to the west, or northwest, railroad to the north. And several existing developments, vacant lot 512 right here, and several developments on the road and April Avenue right, right here at this location. The property is vacant and presently graded. And as Mr. Petrino indicated, there are two retention slash sediment ponds. One is approximately in the middle of the lower portion of this main lot to the west of Whale Creek. Whale Creek is this zigzag line dissecting our project, our project site. And the large one is to the north. Both are to control any excessive sediments being taken from, from the property, settling them within the basin and releasing to the Whale Creek treated waters. The property is graded or has a sloping from Madawan Road, generally, from Madawan Road, in the eastern direction towards the creek. And the same thing with the, on the opposite side, except it grades or slopes in the west direction. I would like to say at this point that the entire eastern side of the property, easternly from the Whale Creek, will not be developed. Will stay, will remain in its existing conditions and is presently wooded. The property, as you heard before, is composed about 94, 94 acres. And it's about all can be said, you know, what can be said about the existing conditions on site, unless anybody has any question regarding these conditions. If not, then I would move to the subdivision part or subdivision plan. This application is basically twofold. One is major subdivision.
I, it's funny, I was just about, I was just picking it down a note. Are these actually in the plans that were submitted to the board? Or are these separated out and are altered in any way that we need to identify?
Yes, we have three exhibits. The first one already presented, this one, and one more, which are part of the set. And we have one colored rendering, which is basically landscaping plan, but it's separate, it's a separate exhibit. It cannot be found in the set of plans.
We'll, we'll mark that when we get to, just, just identify, when you, when we go to the page, just identify this is page 3 of the site plan that was, so we can...
Can we just go back to the first one? What page was that? Page 2 of 36. Okay, page 2 of 36. And now this second one is what page?
It would be page 5 if I can read from here, but I'm too old for that. 5, yeah, wow.
Good eyes.
I'm surprised myself. Anyway, what this plan shows is the, is a subdivision, proposed subdivision of the entire 94 acres. You heard from Mr. Petrino that we are creating three lots. Lot A, which is this largest one, about 65 acres. Lot B, which is this piece of property adjacent to the Parkway. And Lot C, in between, this is this, I would call it like a lag, reaching all the way to Madawan Road, in between Medicine and Bridge Point. So again, these, we are creating three lots. Two of them are in full compliance with your rules and regulations. The, the third one is substandard in terms of area. And the reason being is actually, it goes back, way back before my time, to the settlement between, or agreement actually, between this developer and the development to the north called Bridge Point. That's where the parking area we'll be talking about a little later is actually located. And this is all about the subdivision. And we can now move to the site plan.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, because I'm just taking my notes too. When you say that Lot C is not compliant, there was, it's just lot area that...
Just lot area.
Just lot, thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, impervious coverage.
Just give me one second.
I don't want to be wrong.
Well, the, let me just stop everyone for half a second. Because we have two applications here. We have subdivision and site plan. So in connection with the subdivision, the only thing, if these were just vacant lots and we're just doing a subdivision, the only deficiency on Lot C would be the lot area.
Just give me one second.
Because that's why I'm asking. And then when we get to the site plan part of it, when it gets developed, then I understand there may be additional variances at that time.
Lot C needs lot area and lot coverage.
Coverage, yes.
Thank you.
So we're going to?
We're going to the sheet number 6?
6 of 36?
6 of 36, okay.
And what, that's the site plan?
That's a site plan, overall site plan. And what it shows is basically what we are proposing in terms of residential development of this lot A. The development is composed of 16 buildings. Nine of them are so-called Buildings B. Those are the larger ones, containing about 40 units each, about 40 units each. And Buildings A, kind of condensed around this area, containing about 24 units. What's also proposed is adequate parking. As been said before, we are currently 1,158 parkings, while I believe at 1,020, I don't want to be wrong, let me read it here, is required by RSIS. So we are richly, richly over what's required by the, by the rules.
May I stop you for one second? I think this spoke. The A units have watches, so, and the B units are the three stories. So the A units are the four story. We just, I just checked with your boss.
Okay. Okay. Simply smaller buildings, I can read it from here, are, you know, 24 units buildings and the larger buildings, these are the ones with 40 units and garages and parking spaces in front of these garages. I'm a little disadvantaged because I can't really read what I wrote on those plans, so I'm finding my memory, which is not what it used to be. Anyways, so, I described how many units, I think it's all in line with what you've presented here before, and what else can be said about the Lot A? That we have 423 units will be market value and 106 will be affordable rentals. The, the main access to the property is off of Maravon Road at this location, right across from the ramp serving Parkway. The additional access, so, emergency access is to be created via this corner of the Lot A and into Lot C, where there's an existing boulevard type of roadway connecting this development, the Bridge Point, to Maravon Road. So basically, we have two points of access, one a main one, and the other one is only emergency one. The parkings, we received comments last time around, making sure that we would provide parkings as close to the building as possible, so they would not, the residents would not be forced to walk too far away. I believe the site plan actually achieved this goal and addressed that, that comment pretty, pretty well, if I may say that. Other improvements to the site are green areas located centrally within the lot, within the property, there are so-called Green Park and Neighborhood Park or Neighboring Park at this location. There is also proposed the clubhouse and associated clubhouse and associated swimming pool, the playground for kids, basketball courts, benches and, and similar. There is a dog run proposed at this location, and it's about, I believe it wraps up, proposed improvements of that, of that site. We, at this point, since we do not have any development of the Lot B yet, we do show certain connections, guest connections to that lot for the future purposes, so it can actually be incorporated into this residential property as far as traffic, traffic dispersal and, and, to be actually as convenient as, as possible.
I assume those would not be built until there's a site plan application approved for Lot B, correct?
That is correct, that was also in, in comments from the engineer, I believe, and we intend to comply with this requirement. As far as, you touched upon stone water management, and for that purpose, I think it would be better if we can look at, look up that landscaping plan.
Now, this is new.
This is new.
All right. I think we're up to, we, the next exhibit's going to be A4, based upon the prior.
A4.
So we want to call it rendered or colorized landscaping?
Landscaping plan, yeah. And again, it shows the overgrown easterly side of the Whale Creek to remain, landscaping within the development, developed portion or to be developed portion of the site, that being Lot A, and this is, although this is green, it's graded area where the new or future development will occur most likely. As far as stone water, stone water management is concerned, you're looking at the system of collectors, collector's system within the streets and, and aisle, aisles of this, of this development, diverting water or conveying water into three ponds. This is a detention pond, number three, this is retention pond, number two, and retention pond, number one, and they are connected via piping from each other, it's like a cascade of ponds, treating, treating the, the water runoff from the property. I believe I forgot to say one important thing at the beginning, and I will, I'll say it now, the existing, when I was talking about existing conditions on lot, I should have emphasized the fact that the entire property served as the clay quarry in the 30s and 40s of last century. So there is a very clay, you know, sublayers on the property, and as such, the recharge is impossible, therefore, we cannot provide any recharge on site. What we do provide is we are fully compliant with water quality treatment through these three basins, and obviously, we are meeting, not obviously, but we are meeting all the criteria in front of us in terms of peak rates of runoff being released from the final basin, which is basin number one, back into Whale Creek. As a matter of fact, I would like to emphasize, I would like to emphasize that we are richly over what's required in terms of peak rate of runoff to be released from the property. It's about, for about 20%, I don't want to exaggerate, but about 20% more, 30% more than what's actually required. So that's about stone water management. The other plans, and I don't want to go too far with it, show the grading utilities, which are water and sewer to serve this property. As far as water, we're going to be looping the, the property with the existing eight-inch or extending eight-inch main off of Maravon Road, and the intentions are to actually loop around, but that's preliminary, we have to coordinate and cooperate with the local MUA in both instances, in terms of water as well as sewer, to self, serve properly this development and not to jeopardize the existing, the existing services in the area. In terms of sanitary sewer, because of the existing slopes, as I said, the entire area slopes from left to right or from west to east, we are collecting the sewage throughout the site and bringing it down to approximately this location, where we're going to be calculating and providing a pump station, force main, to discharge sewage into the first available manhole within the sliver of this, this, actually this, what we call Lot C, the first available manhole of Lot C. We provided also your professionals with lighting plan, which I believe is in compliance with all the rules and regulations of the township, and provides adequate illumination of the property, and the landscaping plan, where we got some comments, but I'm positive we can actually settle most of them. And that would be about, what I can say in general about this, this development from the technical viewpoint.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the review memo, you want to ask questions, board questions of our professional, or have your professionals ask any questions?
Yes, I was going to turn it over and ask our professionals, who would like to go first? Any questions? Mr. Darcy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a lot of, a lot of testimony, thank you very much, I was trying to track if you gave all the testimony. One question I do have, I guess, we did get the memo from Mr. Petrino earlier in the day, that, and let me see if I can bring it up on my screen, that, you know, gave some reasoning for some of the comments, the planning comments, I'll defer to Vina with the end, regard to the engineering comments. You listed a bunch of comments, you said, "We will comply." I'm no lawyer, but that mean that you're not going to comply with the other comments? Because that's...
Well, the other ones are testimony.
Okay, well, there was a lot, there were a lot that were not testimony, there were like...
Well, and there are some comments, whether they're not fair comments.
Those are things, okay, those are things that are being deferred to final.
Okay, okay, so, but there is, is there anything of the 134 or so comments that you feel gives you some indigestion that you're going to have to discuss?
Well, just in terms of the memo, would be the, the first comment, which indicate, the review memo we got indicated that, or stated, I shouldn't say indicated, stated that we had to go through variance testimony, which I think is technically incorrect, because if you read the two consent orders, and the whole point of the consent orders was to lay out that we were modifying the phasing.
Understood.
So, that's why I, and I put that as number one.
Yeah, I should, maybe I should be more clear, I apologize. I'll, I'll defer all that stuff to Vina and Joe, because they're a lot smarter than me. I'm talking about the, the engineering, like, technical comments, we had, we had quite a few, there was some labeling stuff, we had some, some clarifications on the plans, we had landscaping that needed to get revised, which Redeem said he would, he would be able to satisfy most of the comments, so I'm wondering which ones were, are not included the most.
Let me deal with the landscaping. Because it's very important to my client.
Important to us too.
We hired a great architect, a great landscape architect, a great engineer, and we looked at your ordinance, and our landscaping plan, plan complies with your ordinance, all the technical requirements. Now, if you have disagreements with it, unless they relate to the standards of the ordinance, we like our plan. And we're the ones that have to build it, we're the ones that have to sell the units, and we've spent a lot of time and effort on the landscaping plan, and, you know, I might look at it and say, gee, I'd like to see you change that and that and that, but if it's not in the ordinance, we're not doing it.
Understood. There are things in the ordinance that, that where it doesn't comply now, I did not do the landscape review, or the landscape architects in, in our office did.
We, we said we would, well, I don't, we said, some of the 36 will comply, a couple of those relate to landscaping.
I don't have any of the landscape, oh, I'm sorry, 118, I'm trying to think of what landscaping, 112, 115, 117 were complies, but landscaping starts at 99 and goes to 118.
Right.
So four of the 19.
Right.
So, there are other ones...
Let me just say one other thing, we had meetings in February, and we've changed the plans since then.
Yes.
And there were certain things, and I was involved, your attorney was involved, we had a lot of people involved, and we revised the plans, and the revised plans do reflect changes in landscaping.
Agreed, agreed, they do.
Right.
But this is a detailed review of the landscaping.
Right.
There are, there are comments where we refer to a ordinance code section where we feel you don't comply.
Okay.
And you're, you're representing that you will comply with the ordinance section.
If, if, if it's an ordinance requirement and it's clearly articulated...
Ordnances aren't always clearly articulated, but...
Well, that's...
And, and, and the interpretation of the ordinance requirement is usually up to Vina and...
Just to add, I mean, I'm just skimming through some of the comments, the comments are more like, okay, this species may not work at this location, we recommend using some other species. I think it's not a big ask, it's something that we can work it out among ourselves when we do come back for the final site plan. So, I, I, I mean, I'm just skimming through it, none of the comments are, see, the variances are what they are.
Right.
I mean, if you need a variance from something, yes, you need it, but I, from what I'm going, when I'm skimming through this list, it's like, okay, we feel that in this section you should have evergreen trees, we can talk before you come back for the final site plan, so our landscape architect can sit with your landscape architect, we can have a technical review and flush it out during that, so that when you come up with your final site plan, it's something that is satisfactory to us as well as you.
It's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we saying the same thing about...
Mr. Alfieri is here now, so I, I, I got the okay on that.
The only thing I would say is, because I know I was in one of the meetings, there were certain places where landscaping-related comments were also related to grading, for example.
Retaining walls.
Yeah, the retaining walls and stuff like that. That too, I think maybe we should flush them out during technical review, it's not that we are picking on something, but because there's a grade change, we think it doesn't make sense to have a bigger retaining wall, it will in fact save you cost.
Well, that might be one of our will comply items.
Right.
I don't know.
I mean, there were quite a few that were, that were not addressed as will comply, that's only, that was my only concern. If, if we're saying that, hey, there are, the rest of the comments, we will discuss and, and work out, that, that's acceptable to me as well, as far as, as long as the, as far as the engineering portions go, because we have comments where, I'll just pick one, one where you, where we don't say. I said pick one, I didn't, I'm trying to pick a good one. We, we're asking for additional spot elevations where it appears the grading is, is pitching water towards one of your buildings. Obviously, you don't want that, we don't want that.
But I have to, I have to say something. You might remember at the Zoom, at the Zoom meeting, it's great, at the Zoom meeting...
I know, we said we'll work it out at final.
No, no, you said, I'm not asking for spot elevation, do you remember that?
Right, but the, the way the contours are arranged, it looks like the water's draining in.
Yeah, showed it.
Well, we'll, we'll work those out, obviously.
If we are granted preliminary, between preliminary and final, we, we had very pleasant discussions in February and whenever, and we'll work it out before we...
But we'll have a similar technical meeting like we did.
Maybe Mr. Alfieri should sit there too, so that he says yes to most of them. Maybe Mr. Alfieri should sit next to you, so that he says yes to most of them.
Well, I can, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I'll hit me, I'll catch me.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I took the, the line of questioning in that, in that direction is because we do have numerous comments, which I, I wouldn't want to go through each, every, each and every single one with, with the board, I think the general consensus that we're, or general sense that we're getting from the app can is that they'll work with us as a condition of final, or I'm sorry, as a condition of this approval at the time of final, to, to basically address the comments in our memo. Anything that's not specifically addressed as an ordinance requirement as it relates to landscaping specifically, you know, we'll, we'll try to work with them and we'll be back at final.
Okay, very good. Vina, are you finished, or...
I actually, I don't have any comment as such, but I wanted clarification from Joe, because I was a little lost with this letter that came this afternoon, and the first comment, like Frank says, so I, I wanted you to explain so that even the board understands what we are trying to do in terms of variances and stuff that...
Vina, I'm sorry, I don't have my hearing aids in, so I'm having trouble hearing.
No, what I was saying is, I want Joe to explain to the board about the variances that are involved, because even I was a little confused when I read the memo, so Joe might be able to explain that better, so that the board understands as well.
Yeah, sorry about that. I, I, you know, with regard to, to item number one and Mr. Petrino's letter, we, me and him, Mr. Petrino have already spoken, you know, we, I might disagree with the language he uses, but ultimately, I think we're in agreement as to the intent. What had, just to give a little background as to where we, you know, once again, we talked about... What had, just to give a little background as to where we, you know, once again, we talked about this before, but specifically with regard to variances. When the board denied the initial application back in December 2022, it was appealed, and ultimately, there was two litigations that were filed by the applicant. One challenging the board's appeal, but also one seeking specific enforcement of the settlement agreement with the township. And that is the settlement agreement that really got this project to where it is today and put the zoning in place for that. That settlement agreement provided for certain terms and conditions as to, as to the development of the site, including phasing and timing. And one of the things that was challenged in that litigation with the township, not with the board, was seeking to have that modified or interpret, it was interpreted, but ultimately, it was settled in a consent order with the township on modifying the language of that settlement agreement whereby the applicant was not required to construct the non-residential portion of it, which we've been hearing tonight, that's the Lot B portion, prior to completing the development of Lot A, the residential portion. And so that consent order provided that, that no longer, amended the settlement agreement. There was a consent order entered by the judge and also amended, essentially amended the settlement agreement with the township saying that that's no longer a condition. The issue is, it's still while we, I mean, I say we, the township, when originally entered into the settlement agreement, adopted zoning ordinances for the site, that requirement is still in the ordinance. So there's a technical variance that needs to be granted, allowing for the phasing, even though it's already agreed to, it's already in a consent order, it's already in the amended settlement. Because it's still technically in our ordinances, it has to be granted. It's something that the board has to grant. It's not a, it's not a really conditional, excuse me, discretionary decision. But it is something the board has to grant as part of the application because it was done in the court and agreed to by the town, but just for whatever reason it was, the ordinances were just never amended. You know, whether they should have been or not, you know, we are where we are. And right now, we have an ordinance on the books that says that there is a phasing requirement. So that variance is required to be granted on a technical basis. So at the end of this, if I'm directed to summarize what the board would be granting if voted for approval for this application, that will be one of them, is that variance. But it's because, not that they're putting on, as Mr. Petrino said, planning testimony to support that, it's a technical variance that's required because it's already been set forth in the consent order.
And just to add on to it, I know there was a lot of write-up on those variances. I just wanted to make it clear that the variance is a technicality. What I was explaining is, yes, we're granting, based on the consent order, we're granting a variance so that they can proceed with the remainder of the residential units. However, whether the report that was submitted based on the non-residential uses, whether there's a market for office, flex space, and warehouse, most of my questions or comments were related to that. But that is, you know, something to be discussed or flushed out at a later stage. That is not part of this application. So although there is write-up, because, I mean, I think it is tied together, however, not part of the direct application, which is in front of you today. But something for you to keep in mind that there was a report that was submitted to prove that the current market conditions do not support an office use or there is no market for flex space or warehousing at that location. And my write-up was saying that, okay, well, there are other uses that are allowed in the non-residential zones that were not contemplated, but that's a topic for a separate day.
Right. If I may, Chairman, just to add to that. The application, and I believe Mr. Petrino did a good job at the beginning, explained to it, but just as a summary, there's two parts to this application. There's preliminary subdivision and preliminary site plan. The preliminary subdivision does involve Lot B because you're creating it. Now, we're creating three lots, Lot A, B, and C, as was previously explained. But the site plan portion of it is only dealing with Lot A and Lot C with this application. Lot B, yes, I just got it spun around in my head for a second. Lot B will be part, it's still part of the development. It's something that will come before this board, but it's at a different phase. The phasing has changed, as we were just explaining with the need for granting of a variance. The phasing's different now, so that Lot B development will come before this board, but at a different time. It's not part of what's being heard before the board this evening.
The one thing I would request, because I don't know if the board clearly understands, is that lot, which is owned by the township right at the entrance, you should provide some testimony or explain it to the board so that they understand which is that lot.
Yes, that's in the memo.
Yes, and I think, because I was a little confused, too, and so I would want the board to understand where we stand.
I can elaborate. I don't know. Do you want me to do that now?
Might as well. I mean, we're all discussing that. Might as well just keep it...
Danny, Danny, you can zoom in to the subdivision plan at the entrance because it'll be helpful for the board to understand.
Okay, so it's, if you have the memo, it's comment 25 in the staff memo, and it's comment four in my memo, or my response four. So there's a, it's a little more than a quarter acre that the township owns. And we have an agreement with the township, and I've spent...
The laser pointer doesn't show.
Mr. Roselli and I have spent a lot of time going back and forth on this, two hard-headed Italians. And the town understands that this has to be sold, and the issue is price. We made an offer. It was rejected, so I have to go back. I think what we're going to do is probably get an appraisal and then go back to Mr. Roselli and work out the final details of the purchase. I mean, it's, it's a quarter acre that's of no use to anyone other than to facilitate the development of Lot A and the, well, and in the future, at some point, Lot B. So I don't, Vina, I don't think it's a big issue if you've talked to Mr. Roselli.
I don't think so. The price obviously is critical. And I was just telling Rakesh, I wouldn't say it's of no use because obviously, it's providing access to your project, so it is...
No, no, it's of no use to anyone else.
Right, right, right. So it is an important piece, and yes, you're right. We would have to do an appraisal to get the highest and best use value for the property.
The history of this is, there's an apartment development...
Bridge Point, Bridge Point. No.
No, the apartment development.
Parkview at Madison.
Madison.
Parkview.
Parkview at Madison.
Yes, Parkview at Madison. Well, they own that, and the township condemned it for this property, to provide access to this property, but we have to work out the price.
I believe that has to be done prior to the final site plan application.
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Roselli's very busy, though, so we have to move him along.
I will work with him because generally, when it comes to appraisals, I work with him. So, yes.
Well, he'll listen more to you than me.
Okay, Mr. Tetra, do you have any questions or comments?
Not really. I mean, I had comments. The letter just came in at like 4:00 this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to see, you know, what the response has been to my issues. I guess basically, if the applicant's saying they will comply, we're good, you know?
Well, in comment two of my, or paragraph two of my memo, which relates to comment 11, that's where I was talking about the off-track improvements. We've been working, and I don't know if Vina has gone to the meetings, but I think it's the township.
I have.
You've gone to the meetings? Okay. So there've been a lot of, well, not as many as I would like, but there've been a number of meetings with the county, NJ, TA, and transit, and the township. And so we're talking about phasing issues. And the one, the phasing issue that I think the county is proposing is more stringent than the settlement agreement. And I don't, we, I don't see objection to that from our end. And the other issue is, in terms of technical issues, we're going to have Carl testify, Carl Henke. And he'll, we'll go through those. We have two sets of improvements, one on the north, again, I don't know north-south, but one on our side of the, of the bridge and one on the other side of the bridge. The only issue in the memos that I saw, the memo from the township that I have to raise is the request for the striping of a third lane over the bridge. That was in the settlement agreement. And then NJ TA, Turnpike Authority, made improvements to the bridge. And then, when this issue was brought up to them in the meetings, and if Vina was there, or you were there, you can... I mean, they've, I mean, they've said, "We're not striping it for the lanes."
That's in our memo because it's, you know, been part of the settlement all along. But we, I understand, and the board should understand, that the, the final disposition with regard to that widening, that third lane on the, on the bridge, second lane, right, on the bridge, is really up to the county and the Turnpike Authority. And that's actually the impetus for the other improvements that the applicant is, is willing to make, which include signalization improvements on both sides of the bridge, lane improvements, some dedicated turn lanes, realignment of the actual off-ramp from the Parkway, and also realignment of the park and ride. That's, that's right there off the off-ramp. So there's a significant amount of improvement that the applicant is going to do or willing to do in lieu of that third lane that was put into the, into the agreement.
If I could just ask a question.
You sure can.
Have you heard anything from Baker? Have we seen anything from Baker in terms of revised plans?
We periodically, we and the county periodically send emails to the Turnpike Authority asking for status, and we have not heard specifically from Baker. We did have a meeting, I want to say the last meeting we had was...
It's February?
It was, yeah, it was right after the Super Bowl.
February 13th.
Yeah, yeah. That was the last meeting that we had with the Turnpike. Actually, you know what? There was a follow-up Zoom meeting after that. There was, I apologize. So there was another meeting after that, but...
Well, at that meeting, the memo that I saw said that Baker, Baker's the traffic consultant that the Turnpike hired. It said that he would, not he, but the company would have revised plans in a couple of weeks of February 13th.
Engineers lie all the time.
Not those that represent... But anyway, that's our, that's the only difference between what we're proposing and what's in the settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement specifically said that those items could be modified by the county or the Turnpike Authority since they have the ultimate jurisdiction.
Right, and that's the only reason why that comment is still in our review memo, just as a placeholder for the board and for the record that this is where we are. And eventually, once, once we get a final disposition on that, it'll go away from the memo, I promise.
Okay. Well, I'm just hoping we can get that before we're trying to, I don't want that to be a condition of final.
I don't...
I mean, if we get to that point.
Yeah, if, you know, if we get to the point where you're at final, I would hope that we have that much further along.
Okay, we'll go to board members. Anybody on my right? Eric?
Danny, can you go back to the colorized landscaping? When you were testifying, the, I guess that's the northeastern, when the big pond, you were saying, you were talking about sewage going down there. You testified, you said sewage, so I just want to, I want to understand exactly what you were saying.
Maybe I misspoke, I don't know, but what I was referring to was actually collection point of the entire sewage system to be approximately at this location and then pumping via force main sewage from the site uphill into the first available manhole on that lot, C.
Is that a new pump station, or is that the one that you...
That's a new pump station. The old pump station sits off of, it's located off of Naples and cuts across the property. It serves this development. I believe that the owner of the property gave these rights or easement years and years and years ago, and that's, that's another system.
I think those were, if I'm remembering, those were lots that had failing septic. So in order to...
I don't know.
What?
I don't know. That's before my...
They had failing septic, so they needed a way to get the, get those lots into the public source system. So they went through the Alfieri parcel to do that.
But so your testimony is, you're going to, all your sewage is going to go there and then get pumped out to the street?
When you say go there, it gets...
So you're, so you're, the sewage is going to collect there, and then you're going to pump it? You're going to bring everything to the back of the site and then pump it to the front?
Yes, it's, you know, it has to follow the grade of the property. I can't do, against gravity, I would end up...
I'll help you out, Radim.
Okay.
The way that the topography of the property is that all this, the sewer wants to go by gravity to that low point, and then...
It's sloped away from the street.
And then it's got to get pumped up to the, to the next available, the nearest available manhole. So that's where it's going.
Okay. Then from the stormwater management, so obviously, your basins are going to be collecting, the parking lot that you're putting in, in that parcel C?
Yes.
So is that all going to then collect into that as well?
Yes, that's also part of our collection system.
Okay, so all of that, so even though eventually it's going to be, it's going to be given over to Bridge Point, that will, so it won't have any adverse effect on the Bridge Point residents once it...
No impact.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure, because obviously...
Fully understood.
Going from vacant land to now sidewalks, and there's a lot of streets and everything in there. So as long as we're not going to impede, and I don't know if they, they may or may not have any issues already with it, I don't want to exasperate it anymore with that, so.
Understood, and it's been taken care of on our property in those three basins I mentioned before.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on my, no? Anybody on my left have questions for the engineer here? Mr. Ferenc, go ahead.
Dan, can you go back to the drawing two of 36?
The existing conditions plan?
Existing condition plan. I wasn't on the board back in 22, December of 22, so forgive me if I'm repeating some of the stuff that you may have heard before. But basically, you have a piece of land that's, that's landlocked on access from Matteawan Road. And the property that you need to get is across from the Garden State Parkway northbound, that's your main access to your property. Am I correct?
Yeah, no, what did you say? We, part of our access road requires the, not, not all of it, but part of it requires a quarter acre that the township has agreed to sell to us.
I see. So the agreement is already in place? No. So basically, we're looking at this area right here? Is that it right there? That's the piece right there?
Yeah. If I may, I would only correct one thing, which is that we are land, the property is landlocked. It's not completely landlocked. It's actually, there's an access, direct access to Matteawan Road through Lot C, but it would not be strategically good point of discharge of the traffic. The one right across from the ramp is much better.
Well, it's better...
Take quite a bit of load. I'm not going to interfere with Carl's testimony.
Right, well, it's...
Can I just point out one thing? Mr. Alfieri has a better memory than I do. Alexander Parkway is an existing road.
Right here.
Yeah, right there. So we have, right today, we have access to our site through Alexander Parkway. So we have, right today, we have access to our site through Alexander Parkway, which is owned by Alferi. And C, Lot C will go to Bridgepoint, and we'll continue, I think we continue to own it, but we have to continue to maintain Alexander Parkway.
So lots, this is the parking area right here that you're giving over to Bridgepoint?
Yes.
Yeah, where the.
It's a parking lot right there.
Yes, right there.
Right.
Fifty parking spaces.
So if you own this, this access road right here, why wouldn't this be the main access road and not interfere with the Olbridge main access to the Garden State Parkway, which is our only access to the Parkway in the northern part of, of our, of Olbridge?
Well, I'll let our traffic consultant handle that, but I think what we're proposing is an upgrade, not, not a impediment.
Well, if you've driven that road long enough, I've driven it down 45, 50 years now, and you put something on there, it's an impediment, but we'll talk to the traffic people about that.
Well, okay, and.
There's one more, if I may, there is one more important thing, in my opinion, backing up our solution, which is property of this size, to actually bear 529 units, it's better to have two points of access from the safety viewpoint.
I, I completely understand that, and it's slightly reasonable, but you're making this an emergency exit right now. This is not your main egress, and this over here is your main egress. Why wouldn't this be your emergency egress and make this your, your normal egress?
Again, our traffic consultant will tell you why, and also.
And you already own it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry.
I'm sorry. And, and, and that entrance to our property has become signalized to alleviate some of the problems with, that occur today at the bridge. So the problems that you've had for 40 years or 45 years, I think the improvements that the county is requiring and transit is requiring, well, more so Turnpike Authority, and you'll hear about those. I think the intent of all of that, and it's a lot of money, it's $3 or $4 million worth of improvements or more, that's the whole intent of that, is to improve the traffic along Matteawan.
Okay, thank you.
But somebody smarter than me will.
And me.
Tell you about it.
Okay, are we all through on this? Oh, go ahead, Mr.
Yeah, not to be redundant, but every catch basin is getting pumped up?
No.
No.
You're talking about catch basins.
Well.
That's, that's stormwater.
Yeah.
And stormwater is being, is going to be discharged.
Into the creek, you said earlier?
I'm sorry?
Did you say into the creek earlier?
I was saying that catch basins via pipe, via pipe system, which is called collector system, will be discharged into those three basins.
Okay.
Okay. And through those basins, where the waters runoff will be exposed to some treatment in terms of water quality, and peak rates of runoff will be discharged under the permitted rates back into the Whale Creek.
Okay. So my question was, so which one of the, that upper one, the largest one, is the sewage?
No, that has nothing to do with sewage.
Yeah, okay. So they're all retention basins?
Yes.
Now, you said they're going to be released into the creek by gravity, by a pump?
By gravity.
Okay.
The stormwater management system works only by gravity.
Yeah, I understand that. So where does the creek terminate? Down south?
The creek on the property terminates at this, approximately at this location, and then it goes into the culvert under the railroad.
Okay. Is that part of your property, or is that someone else's property?
It's the, the point of discharge, ultimate point of discharge of these three basins, they cascade from one to another.
Mm-hmm.
The final point of discharge is past this largest, largest pond, this location.
Okay.
So at this location, this, this property would be, will be, runoff from the property will be discharged back into the creek.
Into the.
Under the permitted rates.
Yeah, under the permitted rates. Now, in the case of a major storm, how is it, how is that regulated going into that creek?
That's why these basins are actually designed to comply with high.
Hurricane.
High intensity, low current storms, up to 100-year storm.
Okay.
And I believe I mentioned before that this, actually, our system is slightly oversized, so we are cutting down those, those peaks quite substantially, way below what's required by rules and regulations.
And you said there's a double pitch going into the creek, obviously, so, okay, that's it.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So the parking lot on Lot C, that's owned by your representative.
Today.
And then at some point, you're going to turn it over to Bridgepoint?
Yes.
How long are you planning to do the maintenance on that?
Uh, once it's turned over, it's Bridgepoint, I believe. We have a settlement agreement, or an agreement on it, and it lays out the, the terms of when that gets turned over. It also, I might add, although I think it's going to have to be built to 50, that it was going to be built at 30 spaces, and if that was sufficient, the other 20 would not be built. But ultimately, it could, it could be that up to 50 spaces could be on that parking, in that parking lot. And then I, I'm not sure, but I think parallel parking is permitted on Alexander, but I'm not a notch.
It's not just permitted, it's actually painted right now. It's fading away, but it's on.
It's there.
Okay.
In testimony tonight, we heard that the area between the creek and beyond E is going to remain woods. Is that indefinite?
The green area there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's no development.
Deed restricted, never going to be any development 20 years from now, 30 years from now?
Yeah, it's not developable, so that's something we could talk about. Some of that has to be maybe part of a conservation easement that we have to give DEP, but it's not, it, it, it's not going to be developed, and if, and if there's a condition that it be deed restricted, I don't, I don't think, you know, that's not a problem.
I personally would like to see it restricted, written, black and white, so it's very clear for the future. It is developable because you proposed a development, so just want to make sure.
Can I say it's not developable under our plan? That's, it's not developable. We're putting all of, we can't, we, we always had only 529 units, but there were, I don't know how many below the stream. So when we, when they got moved above the stream, there's no other development that we're permitted to have residential development in that green area.
I, I appreciate that, you know, I'm lifelong Olbridge, and I want to see Olbridge remain as green as possible, so I think that's important. Um, what else did I have? I, I think I have a little better understanding of the retention ponds. You know, we deal with them in public works all the time, so I see how the water's moving through. I appreciate it being oversized because the 100-year storm is a little bit more common than it used to be. You know, the weather patterns are definitely changing, so, you know, I mean, you can see we don't get snow anymore, now it's all rain, so having that oversized retention pond is definitely important. And, you know, I would like that whatever maintenance you guys perform on them, really keep up with them, because if that orifice exiting the, the retention pond gets clogged, it causes a lot of issues. So maintenance is really important.
Well, remember, one of the things that Rajeev prepared was an operation and maintenance manual, and it lays out all the terms of maintenance.
Obligations, yes. Or the owner.
You got anything for me, or?
No, no, no.
That was a sidebar.
He was asking me about something that I mentioned early on, that we do annual maintenance of the site.
Perfect. The, you, you have your main exit point with the traffic signal. Unfortunately, motor vehicle crashes still occur at traffic lights, so you have your emergency exit. I'm assuming that's going to be blocked off with some kind of device?
The emergency access, we actually got a comment from the engineer, and it was a correct comment, that the emergency access would be somehow blocked. Usually, it's like a two pylons with a chain, chain across with the keys to that, to the lock available to the emergency vehicles of the township.
Okay. So if there was a crash and nobody could exit your development from the permitted exit, would you guys utilize that for motor vehicle traffic, or is that strictly for fire, first aid, police?
Strictly for the emergency vehicles, but should there be any, you know, kind of big accident, or, oh, you mean if something happens at the intersection?
Correct.
Do the people start turning around and going through there?
Not so much the, the, the traffic on Matteawan Road, the people that are going to live in this development. If there's a issue and they can't get out, they're stuck until that gets resolved.
Casey, can I help you with that? At that time, the police pretty much have the.
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, do whatever they want to do. These guys don't have control over that.
Right, I was actually going to add that.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on what tragedy, tragedy might have happened, it's either police or OEM, if that becomes, but then it's a township issue saying, you know, it's a health hazard for these people not to be able to exit, the police could then open up that, but it's, that's going to be in the township's purview at that point. It's not something that the applicant can then make a decision and open up.
Okay. Would it be beneficial to have a gate like we installed at the end of Oakwood's Parkway, where the emergency personnel, when they pull up, it opens automatically? Because if there's a fire or some serious situation, you know, they don't, now they got to find a key to, to get through these, these chains?
Yeah, our usual procedure is to, is to discuss with fire and OEM and police, and basically give them what they want there. So that, that's, that's what we'll do when, if the applicant acts, or if this is acted upon favorably by the board prior to final, we'll, we'll coordinate with, with the emergency services.
Yeah, I just think it's important, you know, if somebody needs help, we need to make sure our.
I agree, absolutely.
And as of right now, I think that's all I have. I, I appreciate the deed restriction on that property, though.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple of questions. That small lot C, the one that currently has a road going through it, that's going to be a, a parking, parking area?
Yes.
Is it going to be for commuters only, or a mix?
No, 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 that's for Bridgepoint.
Oh, for.
For the condo.
Oh, okay.
It's going to become part of the condominium land.
Oh, because right now, they park on Matteawan Road, parking is tight.
Right, we understood that there was some shortage of parking or problem with.
My other question is where Whale Creek runs off your sheet to the right there, that lot, you have something written on that lot, I'm sure it tells you the acreage and the.
Which one, Mr. Chairman?
The, the, the large one below Whale Creek.
Below Whale Creek.
Below Whale Creek.
Listen to him.
North, north, that would be the northeast corner, that, that big lot there.
That one?
Who owns that?
We, Mr. Alferi.
Oh, so it's, it's part of, and.
Well, no, that, that can't, I'm trying to remember what, what? No, no, I understand. He owns it, but that can't be developed.
Okay. That's all I have. Okay. Are we?
I thought he was.
Yeah, okay. We could open to the public now for questions of the engineer.
And just so we're, this is just questions of the testimony from this witness at this time. At the end of the hearing, all comments and general questions can be brought up.
Right.
David Merwin, Lawrence Schaber. The, well, you guys are smart. You got half my questions asked. The, doesn't Olbridge Township have an ordinance that says there must be two ingress, ingress
So the, this site is actually governed by the residential site improvement standards, the state's site improvement standards, which don't have a requirement like that. They basically require design, that's one of the reasons why the applicant actually has the Boulevard entrance, because that way it actually, that, that divided road actually serves as the, the alternate means of egress, but the applicant has provided that emergency access for, in case of emergencies, for, for people to get in and out. But it, this is compliant with RSIIS. The, yeah, if the, I don't believe the township actually has a requirement to provide two means of access, but.
I thought they did.
If, if it did, and then I could, I could be wrong. If it did, the residential site improvement standards would actually supersede that requirement.
Yeah.
This is the Boulevard type of access road.
I'm aware, I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware that, what if the gas leak is right there on the Boulevard? And how do people get out? It's a gas leak, ain't nobody going up one end of the Boulevard or the other Boulevard.
The gas leak is not going to be on both sides. There's two lanes, so if one lane gets blocked, that's the whole point of the RSI. The other lane is.
I think what, I think what Mr. Merwin's saying is that if there's a gas leak over there, you're not, you're not going to be allowed near there.
Yeah, shut down.
But, but the, the, there is an alternate means of getting out if, if, for emergency purposes. We just were speaking of that when Mr. Lending was asking.
Yeah, I, I just don't know why you own Alexander Boulevard, why you just don't have two ingress?
I.
You know, why you don't have two? Why aren't we building an entrance?
I think the.
To your complex, you know? And then, and then, no matter which end, something happens, they can get out. I understand these little 12-house developments maybe not having two, two in and outs. This is 529 units.
Yeah, as far as, and I'll let Mr. Kuchera and Mr. Alferi answer it as well, but I wasn't involved in the initial conception of this plan that was probably done, gosh, 10, 12 years, many years ago.
Fair share.
Yeah, many, you know, many years ago. But the, the general idea, though, I think is, they wanted to have main access off of Matteawan directly to the development for emergencies, they have the alternate means of access, because they didn't want to overload the one Boulevard entrance where you already have a, a pretty significant condominium complex that, that accesses out to Matteawan Road. I'll let, I'll let the applicant's traffic engineer answer that as well when it gets up.
We'll have Carl answer that, but from RSI's standpoint, that is two entrances, the Boulevard.
It complies with RSI standards.
We understand that. I would agree with you, you know, it's two, but not in reality. And Casey hit on it, I, you know, it's one of the, the big notes here, you know? You have that whole eastern portion of land, you have 106 units that they had proposed to build there. Now, I understand it doesn't meet the zoning, so what did they do in this town? They come and go before the zoning board, and they get approvals to go beyond and above and beyond. So I would love that deed restriction, that they aren't able to build anything on east of that Whale Creek, you know, and come back and say, hey, you know, maybe we want to put 50 units there or something. Let's say, no, let's, all right?
Applicant has agreed to that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Anybody else from the audience would like to? Okay, we'll close this portion. Thank you for your testimony.
Do we need to go through, I don't think we do, because we generally talked about stormwater conditions, and other, you know, the landscaping. We were going to, we had a list that we were going to go and say, will we comply? You know, we're not going to talk about this one because we comply, we're not, I don't think we need to do that.
I think the discussion how it went, especially since this is for preliminary only, is that the applicants, what the resolution would say if this gets approved would be, the applicant agrees to work with the board's professionals to address the comments one way or the other, you know, we'll work on the final language prior to coming back for final approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we don't, that way we don't have to go through 200 so comments.
No, it's not 200.
Or whatever it may be at, at this meeting, but the board understands. Or whatever it may be at the at this meeting, but the board understands that the professionals, you know, they have the copy of the report, they know what the concerns are, and they know the applicant's going to work with our board professionals in between and that you guys will be coming back for final at some point.
Yes, hopefully we get.
Incorrect, that was the assumption.
Our, I I don't think there are any architectural issues because he testified in in February, but. Were there more questions from the public?
We, oh.
Oh, I didn't see you.
Yes, you you have to, you have to come up to the mic. Sorry if we didn't see your hand. The chairman had closed the public because we didn't see anyone else wanting to come up.
We'll open it up for you, sir.
Yes, I'm Dave Goodwin from Lawrence Harbor, okay? What's going to be the total of apartments they're going to build, you know? I I didn't hear that.
529.
529. And did they take Lawrence Harbor into consideration with the traffic flow? You know, in my opinion, I think it'd be a disaster, you know?
Well, we do have the next witness is the traffic witness, so we're going to hear that testimony next.
And, you know, not only that, you have the glassworks down Clifford Avenue. And, you know, they're building up, you know, it looks like it's going to be a state, you know, they're building so many units there, you know, and that's my concern with Lawrence Harbor.
Well, the traffic engineer will be next and you can.
Yeah, then they're talking about making a three lane on the bridge, then that's going to close everything up on Madawan Road, you know? So, okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. We got another customer. Step right up here.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. My name's Elliot Frushine. I live in Bridgepoint. On the landscaping, I'm assuming to the right is that's Bridgepoint above.
Yes.
How close is that building in orange next to Bridgepoint?
120 feet. I'm sorry, you have to get back in front of the mic. Just we we're broadcasting this, it's all being recorded, so.
I'm just guessing because the landscaping buffer is 50 feet. So I'm prorating it and from the property line and.
Can we put up the landscaping?
Yeah, can we go back to landscaping, please?
Yeah, that one.
No, no, I'm going, yeah, okay, so we see, yep, that's correct. Yep, so you're telling, you're telling. 150 feet. And you have trees? That's trees that are there going to block?
Trees, shrubs, evergreens.
And that's, can I just ask, what is the, is that in the, because I live on Hannah. Is that where Hannah, is that the side of Hannah or is that on the other side of, is that on Capica's side? No, I just want to know what's, I live on Hannah. Is that Hannah or is that Capica?
Are the streets? Andrew, are the streets, they're not, they're not labeled?
Well, they should, I mean, honestly, they should, you should know, I mean, what street it is because I get the letters, okay, on Hannah. And I have a suggestion, I cannot understand anything than anything, you know, when I get the letters from the civil engineer letters, like, that's why I'm questioning this, because I don't understand anything. So now you're telling me that you don't know what street that is. It's either Hannah or Capica.
It's not something that we would normally list. By the way, this ordinance standard is 50 feet, you're getting 150 feet.
150 feet, okay. I guess there's nothing you could do about it. My other question is to the board. I lived in North Edison for over 20 years. We had a big explosion in construction, houses, people, you know, loads and loads of people. Is there anything in plan or any any contingency plan or anything that will, you know, correct? Let's say with the schools, you have 529 units that are going in. Do we know how many people, how many people are going to be in those, you know, the total amount of population in the units? Do we know what the total amount of units of the population is going to be?
Part of the record is a community impact statement.
Okay, and I, so again, my my question is, are there going to be plans for the school system? Because in North Edison, we had kids that were learning in trailers. Now, obviously, I'm 67 years old, I don't have, I have grandchildren, so it's important for me to understand or everybody to understand, what are they going to do with the new influx of children in the, you know, going to the schools? Is there, is there any thought to this at all?
Good question.
And I guess, and I guess from the silence, there hasn't been any.
From when ordinances are adopted, things that are taken into account are impacts on various elements of the of the township, including the schools.
But I'm not talking to Mr. Alfieri's attorney, I'm talking to the planning board.
Well, I can, all I can say is that the this was, including the number of units, was part of a settlement agreement the township entered into with Mr. Alfieri as well as other developers for its third round affordable housing compliance. That was settlement agreement, was approved by the court, it was gone through. That was well before my time, so I can't tell you what was going on in people's minds then or what discussions were taking place or not. But at that time, that would have been considered, it would have been talked about when, because the, when the ordinance was adopted, it was adopted pursuant to the settlement agreement, which set forth the total number of units, the maximum density that would be permitted here. So at that time, the township had to have considered what that impact is to be able to say, okay, we're going to let you build 529 units. Because the board here is not saying, we're not granting a variance or we're not granting any approval that's saying you can build 529 units. The the settlement agreement, the court and the ordinances already say that, those have been in place for 10 to 15 years. All the board has can view at this point is, does the plan that's being presented comply with the terms of that settlement agreement and and the ordinance that were in place because of it? So I I get your frustration.
I understand what I'm saying.
I I totally, and if if this was a new development that was coming before the board that's never been heard of before, these are questions that we would absolutely have dealt into. Mr. Petrino talked about how some of that information is provided in the community impact statement that was provided, but to say, why do they get, why are they allowed to build 529? That was something decided 10 to 15 years ago, and this board doesn't have the authority to say, no, you can't, it's going to be too much of an impact.
I'm not saying that, I, there's no problem with advancements and, you know, and properties and things of 529 units. I'm saying, you're going to have 529 units, you're going to have, let's say, 5,000 more people that are coming in, you're going to have a lot, a lot of children that are going to go into the Old Bridge Town, into the township's school system. What is in place to absorb that? And again, I'm on, you know, like a lot of other, you know, people of my age who are on fixed incomes, you know what's going to happen with your taxes? Because it happened in North Edison, I lived there for 20 years, I was involved in the school system, and, you know, it doesn't seem like there's an, there was any kind of an impact statement or anything to address what's, you know, all of these kids going into the school. And you know what's going to happen with the taxes? They're all going to go, taxes are going to go up.
So as a as a council representative, it's the one thing I can say, so this property will be paying the full school tax. There is no, like, agreements or anything like that, there's no such thing as a tax abatement. So theoretically, I'm going to use smaller numbers for myself. So the school gets around 58, 59% of of every dollar.
Right.
So they will continue, they will get that out of this property. So as this property is developed, the property will be reassessed to the value of what it will be. So let's say it's valued at $100 today with all these units. If it's valued at $1,000, right, the school will get 10 times the taxes based off of this property, and then the school will be able to utilize those funds to do whatever they need to in order to.
To accommodate.
To accommodate the students.
The increase in the population, I hope so, because it didn't happen.
No, unfortunately.
Where I, where I lived, I I don't, you know.
I I totally understand, but.
At JP Stevens High School, the kids were learning in trailers. And that was, you know, and the taxes and the taxes are as as expensive this year.
Yes, no, I I 100% agree. I just wanted to make sure of that. A lot of folks are are under the misconception that any and all developers get 20-year abatements and they don't, there's no level of that. So should the school board, they will get that money, and then the folks that sit on that Board of Education as well as the administration there will have the opportunity to utilize those funds, whether they need to improve a school like Madison, like any of those schools that are down there, like, they'll be able to to do so. So they'll have the funds available to them from from really from the get-go. As things come online, the assessments change, then the taxes will raise along with the assessed value of the property.
And then just one one last question. Lot B is not being developed now, correct? Am I correct in saying?
It's not part of this application, no.
Okay. But I don't know if because is Lot B going to be considered for residential housing again, you know, down the road?
Not unless the zoning's changed.
Okay.
You agree, Joe, can you talk about that? That's in place, that, please.
The settlement agreement that was even as modified still provides that that Lot B is to be developed as a non-residential.
As a non-resident, okay.
Non-residential development.
Okay, all right.
So unless something changes that would be outside of this board's, you know, at the township level, then that's what it is.
Okay, all right, great. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any of you last? You want to wait till the traffic study? Okay.
Yeah, there'll be another, after after each witness, the public gets gets to ask questions of that witness. And then at the very end of the hearing, when the applicant rests, then you can come up and make any comments, questions, statements, whatever you want at that point about the application in general.
I got one.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please just state and spell your record for, uh, spell, state and spell your name for the record, sorry?
Yes, certainly. For the record, my name is Carl with a K, Penkey, P as in Peter, E H N K E. My way of qualifications, I am Vice President with Langin Engineering Environmental Services. I am a registered professional engineer in a state in New Jersey. My license is in good standing. My area of expertise since 1985 has been in traffic engineering, and I've appeared before this board many times in the past, including on this application.
Okay, you're accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, so all my questions.
Yeah, I don't like questions.
All right. Did you, just a couple, did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the traffic impact study last revised March 15, 2024?
I did.
All right. And then did you prepare or supervise the preservation of the improvement plans along Madawon, Madawon Road, both phases one and two?
I did. There should be two exhibits.
Can we put the first one up?
That I will talk to.
This is, this is new.
No, no, these were, these were submitted with the application.
Oh, they're not new, okay.
Okay, then we don't have to mark these.
Uh, this is the, the other, put the other one up, that's the phase one, this is phase two.
All right, if you can just please say when you reference it, just identify for the record.
I will. So just to lay a little bit of groundwork before I discuss these two preliminary plans, in terms of my involvement with this property, I've been involved with planning and studying the development of this tract since the the early 2000s. Through the years, there's been several different concepts and considerations for the development of this property, which over the years has really downsized itself to this current application for residential development with 529 units as as this application is presenting to the board. Our analysis is documented within the traffic study that's dated most revised, recent revision of March 2024. Over those years, I've had a lot of opportunity to become familiar with the site, to sample traffic on the roadway system, including traffic data that was collected back in the late 90s, early 2007, 2008, 2013, 2019, 2022, all of which has developed a fairly substantial database that we've evaluated through the years and used to define and understand access opportunities to this property and infrastructure needs. Also during the course of that time, I've had opportunities on many occasions to meet with what was then the Garden State Parkway Authority, which is now the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, as well as Monmouth County, to discuss various aspects of opportunities and improvements along Madawon Road and that interchange 1120. Most recently, there's been a series of meetings in late 2024, and then subsequent to that in early 2025, without our involvement, quite frankly, between the township and county and Turnpike to further involve the interests of those agencies, the municipality, and most recently, actually, New Jersey Transit has also become involved in those discussions. And all of that's been considered through through the years. The traffic study itself, which is submitted with this application, is prepared in accordance with standard engineering protocols. We've documented the the existing roadway system, we've inventoried the traffic controls. As I said, we've collected the data through the years that have all corresponded with each other and given us a good snapshot of traffic conditions on the the roadway system. The traffic study also includes a projection as to the amount of traffic that will be generated by a community of this size. That projection, as this board is aware, is made utilizing industry-accepted data that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the publication Trip Generation, which is currently in its 11th edition. And that data is substantive for residential development. As I said, it is the source data that is used by the county, the state, the municipality in understanding the traffic generation of of the site. Traffic engineers in particular seek to look at the the peaks on the road system, when the road systems are peaking its traffic, and when the project development will be peaking its traffic and the overlay of those two conditions for residential development that generally occurs on a typical weekday, in these days, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, during the morning commuter hour and the evening commuter hour, which out here is generally occurring between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m., and again, 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. Those are the the peaks that we look to model and understand the geometry and traffic controls that are needed to safely process process traffic flows. The traffic study also does document a detailed modeling, again, using currently industry practice of the adjacent roadway system in order to confirm the geometry that's needed. And we've actually gone further than that with the county and Turnpike and have simulated traffic flows for the Turnpike for them to understand the operations of the roadway system. All of that's documented in the traffic study, and it's been boiled down through the years. We really have understood the solutions on this roadway for several years now. It's just a matter of having advanced approvals, which we're in various levels of, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit on that. And just to touch on a little bit about the access opportunity to the property first before I get into the specific improvements. As was just recently discussed, this property basically fronts on Madawon Road in two locations. One is through the parcel that goes out through Alexandria Parkway and serves as the main access for the Bridgepoint Condominium Association. And the second is at the frontage that we have on Madawon Road by the interchange. Unfortunately, what we recognized way back in the early 2000s was that the the frontage wasn't sufficient to properly locate a driveway on Madawon Road at the near the interchange itself and needed to be expanded in order to get in alignment with the Turnpike ramps. And that was the subject of the recent conversation about the acquisition of the the parcel that I had identified years ago needed to be acquired to to accomplish that. The the intent is to provide the the access where it is least disruptive, it has the least impact on the Bridgepoint Condominium Association, not adding additional traffic to where those residents live, and that was a significant concern to the association and its residents through the many years that this project has evolved. In addition, its access to Madawon Road is relatively constrained, it doesn't have left turn lanes, it's single lane on Madawon Road at that. it's single lane, uh, on Madawon Road at that location, very little frontage to do any substantive improvements at that location. So all of that dictated that the right place to act, uh, to, to set up by an access location was closer to the interchange, where all of our traffic, or the majority of our traffic, would be traveling to anyway. So, so we needed to deal with the traffic at the interchange, uh, regardless of whether or not we came in on, uh, Alexandria Parkway. So after, after all is said and done, uh, with all the analysis through the years and, and, and the modeling and so forth, what we focused in on is, uh, basically, uh, two sets of improvements. Uh, the important improvements to the north side of the interchange include establishing the access to the Green and Old Bridge, which will be a boulevard driveway, as discussed, that extends down into the tract. Uh, it is basically, uh, set up to have a multi-lane approach to Madawon Road, a left turn lane, uh, a through lane, and a through right turn lane, three lanes, to maximize the capacity, minimize the queues, and, uh, and maximize the efficiency of utilization of a traffic signal at that location. With regard to Madawon Road itself, as you come over the bridge, over the parkway, uh, right where the structural component of the parkway bridge ends, we begin a widening. It's a substantial, substantive widening over 1,200 feet in length. That opens up, uh, Madawon Road to provide two separate left turn lanes onto the northbound on-ramp, a separated through lane outside of the queue area of the left turning vehicles, and a right turn lane into the Green and Old Bridge. All of that is set up based on the modeling to eliminate the issues that occur there today, where you have a single lane coming across the bridge that feeds, uh, both the left and through movements on Madawon Road. So anybody waiting to make a left to get onto the parkway today, basically blocks the through traffic. By the widening that's being, uh, designed and constructed there, we separate, uh, the various components, the left turn traffic, the through traffic, and the right turn traffic. Similarly, in the southbound direction along the park, uh, we widen to provide a left turn lane separating turning traffic into the Green and Old Bridge from the through traffic. We maintain a through lane, uh, across the bridge, and we create a right turn lane onto the northbound on-ramp. The northbound on-ramp itself gets reconfigured to have two receiving lanes that are properly then merged down to one lane in accordance with turnpike standards, and the ramp itself is widened as it come off the turnpike, uh, off the parkway, uh, to provide a left turn lane to northbound, uh, Madawon Road, a separate through lane, uh, into the, uh, Green and Old Bridge, and a right turn lane to the southbound Madawon Road. Again, the intersection will be signalized. It will also include all current standards for pedestrian accommodation, and that's important because that also provides the multimodal pedestrian solution to this site, which provided a connect, a, uh, provide a connected pedestrian path across Madawon Road at a safe signalized crossing to a sidewalk that will extend down to the sidewalk that was constructed on the north side of the bridge when the turnpike redid the, the bridge deck. So there will be a, uh, pedestrian connection that gets you, uh, across and across the turnpike, uh, the, the parkway to, uh, to the park and ride and the transit facilities that exist down there. As I said, the intersection will be signalized, and in effect, at the end of the day, an intersection that currently is operating at failing levels of service will be improved to C levels of service. And for the public, uh, just a little bit of, uh, of what that means, uh, from a traffic engineering standpoint, uh, while we do detailed modeling that calculates delays and queues and so forth, we attempt to simplify it by creating a, uh, a rating system, which is basically A to F, none unlike an old grade school report, a card, A being free flow condition, something you experience in the middle of night in New Jersey, F being, uh, a, a failing condition. However, failing condition doesn't mean congestion and backup, it means that when you get to the traffic signal, you may wait a cycle, uh, before you get through the intersection, or, or at a stop-controlled intersection, you may be waiting, uh, 30, 40, 50 seconds, uh, with a couple of cars in front of you before it may be a turn to choose a gap and, and make a turn. Uh, so in this case, we have an intersection that is failing, predominantly the, uh, the turns off of the ramp are experiencing long delays because of the heavy traffic on Madawon Road, particularly the high left turn traffic in the AM to the northbound, uh, parkway. Uh, and when we're done with the, the lane configuration and traffic control at this intersection, it'll be improved to level of service, uh, C operations with all of the traffic generated by the 529 residential units. So that's a good thing. Uh, this improvement has been, uh, agreed to, uh, by the, the, the county, as well as the turnpike. The configuration shown on this particular plan, uh, actually includes, uh, the geometric recommendations of the turnpike in terms of how they wanted to see the signal configured, as well as, uh, the, uh, the county. And in fact, we are well along, probably about 80% designed, uh, on this intersection, getting ready to submit back to the, the county and turnpike. The only thing we're finalizing now is our drainage design, uh, at, at this intersection. So we're well advanced, and this would be phase one, and would be established, associated with the initial development of the project. Obviously, it needs to be because to have the first unit occupied, you have to have the driveway and the signal operated. So it gets built in one shot, one phase, uh, and will exist, uh, when the development comes on, comes online. When we go to this, to the next exhibit, what we call phase two, uh, under the settlement agreement, uh, if you can bring that up, under the settlement agreement, uh, the requirement was to signalize the existing southbound ramp. So, uh, just to give you a little bit of a clearer picture, the existing southbound off-ramp actually comes down and travels through the existing park and ride, and then connects with Madawon Road at this location. The settlement agreement required traffic signalization of that ramp. This has evolved, uh, as a result of the input of the turnpike authority, the county, and the township to assumption, something much more substantive. Uh, again, this intersection today is operating at level of service EF conditions, uh, and we are improving it to level of service B, as in boy, conditions. And that is being done as a result of input from the, the, uh, turnpike authority, as well as the county. The county has required that we introduce, uh, a left turn lane to the southbound on-ramp, uh, as well as maintain the right turn lane onto the southbound on-ramp. The turnpike has required or is requiring that we reconfigure the sort of disjointed mess of the ramp, uh, inner, sort of inner circulating through their park and ride. So there, uh, this concept shown here was provided to us in 2024 from, uh, the turnpike authority for us to design, uh, and it basically, uh, relocates the southbound off-ramp to the, what I would call the north side of the park and ride, creates a new signalized intersection with the required turn lanes, and, uh, reorders the park and ride separate from the ramp. Where we are today on this is, uh, uh, what we were talking about earlier, we are waiting for final feedback from the, uh, turnpike authority, the county, the municipality, and the turnpike authority, and New Jersey Transit had, uh, one or two meetings, uh, to discuss their various input, and they have put this out to their consultant, Michael Baker, to refine the plan. As soon as we receive those, uh, final, you know, that final input from the turnpike authority, uh, we are prepared to proceed with the, the design of the south side. And again, the south side would be implemented, uh, at the halfway mark of the, the development. Uh, and, uh, in accordance to the settlement agreement that, uh, does not require the signal to be in place for any number, particular number of units, we will have it in place for, uh, the, the, uh, the, the midpoint, uh, 265 units for the development. So that basically summarizes, uh, the considerable work that's been done. Uh, obviously, there is a lot of effort and a lot of different interests, uh, here that we've been working through between the county, uh, the turnpike, and, and now, most recently, New Jersey Transit. We think we're unwinding it all. Uh, we certainly have the north side figured out, uh, and the south side, I, I hope to be putting full pen to paper within the coming month or two. Uh, we're all set to go on that, uh, and, and get that designed and, and permitted for construction. And really, that summarizes where we are on traffic. I think Redeem has really described the site. It is compliant with the residential site improvement standards for a, a multifamily development supported by a parking lot. The circulation is straightforward, the access is appropriate, uh, and will support the residents, uh, of that, uh, new community, uh, in this municipality.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess, Mr. Trudeau, that would be your forte?
Yeah, I, I, I had some comments on, uh, the report. A lot of it had to do with the, and like, and it's difficult here because the, uh, parkway's kind of running east-west in this area, and it's a north-south road, so I know it gets a little hard to explain it. So that's, yeah, mostly it was about clarifications. The one thing that, uh, I did note that was, uh, the counts were done in 2022 and we're out almost three years, so I was a little concerned that conditions may have changed out there, and that maybe we wanted to, you know, maybe the count should be redone at one or more locations, just to confirm that things haven't changed and that the, the baseline, you know, assumptions back then are still, are still true. Um, I know, you, 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 you know, you have, you're applying a, uh, uh, you know, growth rates and everything to that. So, uh, you know, I mean, that takes into account somewhat, I, I'm sure, but, uh, you know, just the amount of time that's elapsed since, since the, the counts were done. And I think the other major point that I had in my, my comments were that, uh, you took it, uh, as, and I, from what I'm saying, you took addition, adjacent developments into account, um, wasn't sure, uh, you know, when that was, information was obtained, and, you know, maybe if there was a need to go back and see if things have changed in the near three years since that information was gathered, if other sites have come in and been approved that could affect the, the no-build condition here. So that was another concern that I had, you know, that again, could have, could change the results. I mean, as far as the design, it, you know, I think what you have there makes a lot of sense. Uh, you know, looks, looks good. Uh, uh, I don't see any particular issues with it. Uh, I do know earlier you mentioned about getting Baker to, uh, re, approve things, and I can understand you're, you're waiting.
No.
Yes, I know. I, I, I've been in your position, believe me, I know. So, uh, yeah, but assuming, you know, they buy in and they don't want any significant changes, I guess, I guess everything's good. One thing, uh, on, on the plans, it looks like I heard earlier that the bridge is now three lanes?
No, so, so the bridge is, was reconstructed, deck was reconstructed by the turnpike authority, I don't know, about six or seven years ago now. Uh, it was reconstructed with a wider, uh, sidewalk area and a narrower car way width. Uh, the thought on the three lanes actually evolved way back when we were thinking about a heavier commercial use on this site.
Oh.
It was a one point, I think, six, 700,000 square foot of office. The three lanes really is not needed. What's needed is the geometric improvements that have been developed at each end of the bridge.
Yep.
Uh, which is part of the evolution that's happened at the south side, where we've gone from a simple traffic signal to some fairly substantive reconstruction and realignments. Uh, the north side, uh, we have plenty of distance from actually the bridge structure in order to, uh, develop the lane arrangement, as I showed on the, the phase one. So, uh, you know, basically, uh, the need for any restriping of the bridge, which is from an engineering standpoint, no practice there anymore, uh, is really obviated by these improvements.
Okay, that, you know, I, looks good, you know, I think, I think.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Pedestrian access to the park and ride.
Sure.
Did you just explain?
Yeah, so, so as I said, on the north side, uh, the traffic signal will have all pedestrian bells and whistles. The, when they redid the deck, they built a, uh, I think it's a six to eight foot, it might even actually be eight foot wide pedestrian, uh, concrete path on the north side of the, the, the bridge. That carries all the way to the south side, and then today it sort of ends. So we're picking that up with a path that continues down to the new signal, and we're actually picking up the sidewalk that is to the south of us on the south side of, uh, Madawon Road, carrying that up to the new signal, creating pedestrian crossing under signal control and tying that into the park and ride. And what has been happening, and I don't have the final answer on that, is how New Jersey Transit wants to operate. This concept
Yep.
showed establishing a bus stop within the park and ride, that both directions of the, the transit would come into and utilize. I understand there might still be some discussion about maintaining a bus stop on, uh, Madawon Road as it is today. I think the stop is actually just to the south of our winding. But whatever it is, that's not a, an argument with us, it's whatever transit wants, uh, we've got the opportunity to do it, we're just waiting to be told what it is. But yeah, so, so at the end of the day, if you use the bus, you have full pedestrian access to cross the bridge and get to the, uh, Green and Old Bridge.
Can I just, uh, there were two comments about traffic counts and other developments. How would you respond to that?
So, so with regard to traffic counts, we don't have an intention to, to go back and revisit. Uh, you know, as I said, we've been taking counts out here since 1998, 2000, 2008, 13. What we found through the years is the volumes have been relatively consistent. This design has basically evolved and been consistent through all those years. There's a high level of northbound traffic on Madawon Road that makes the left onto the parkway northbound in the morning, and there's a heavy return traffic in, in the evening. That pattern has basically stayed consistent, uh, relatively consistent through the years. With regard to other developments, the only real major development in this area, uh, has been the glasswork site, uh, which actually I did the traffic study for. So this traffic impact study, when it was prepared, reflected the actual level of development that was already in place when we last did the counts in 2022, and that remaining to be constructed. So it was current as of 2022 in terms of the volumes. That development hasn't changed. It actually has, well, actually, I should say it has changed. In the last year and a half, it has downsized and has eliminated its commercial component. That's reflected in this traffic study. It no longer has a commercial component, it's gone to all residential.
Okay, Mr. Darcy, do you have any comments?
I don't have any questions for Mr. Penkey.
And, and certainly will provide a full response to the comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Suwan?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, uh, anybody to my right? Go ahead, Eric.
Alright, I have a few. Um, so one of them you actually answered, I was wondering how the, the buses would ingress and egress. So that's still something that they're contemplating and.
Yeah, we're waiting for final determination. On this particular plan, uh, the intent was for the buses to be able to come in, uh, and use a, a bus stop at this location, and a bus stop at this location. That was the last concept we had with pedestrian connectivity. I understand, and maybe, I mean, you could tell, tell, tell me further, that they might be trying to take both directions of the bus into the site.
Yes, there.
And that's, that's what I think was probably one of the bigger items they've been grappling with.
So would you be doing the improvements on the park and ride?
Yes.
Okay, so whatever the,
Whatever it is, unless it's obscenely wrong, uh, we will be designing it, yes.
Okay. Um, the trip generation, right, what was it when you first started to look at it versus what it is with 2022? So what is the, what is the variance in the numbers? It says it's been pretty consistent in how, how the traffic flow has been, um.
It's, it's actually been up and down through the years. Uh, and we, we saw some fairly steady, when we did counts back in 2007, 2008, 2013, and I think it was 2019, we were seeing relative consistency, uh, a little bit up and down, bouncing. Uh, and then 2022, again, same patterns, slightly down, uh, which isn't inconsistent with what we're seeing post-COVID these days. It's still down a little bit. Uh, but, uh, but for the most part, the patterns are the same. Like the left turn onto the parkway's always been bouncing 7, 800 vehicles per hour, uh, someplace in, in that, that area. Uh, and that's really the, the most challenging issue we've always had, is that left turn to northbound parkway, which is coming up from, 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 from the south and going north. And then there's a very heavy right turn coming off in the southbound direction in the PM, uh, which makes sense. It's the commuter patterns of the residents in this area.
Mm-hmm. And then the improvements that you're doing, uh, going south, so coming down and then going southbound onto the parkway, it's going to be signalized at that turning?
It will be signalized at this location. So, uh, to, to, if, if you look, you can see sort of the shading of the underlying existing road. So today, uh, what happens is Madawon Road comes up and drops as a lane into the ramp that's actually at this location.
Mm-hmm.
We're actually taking We're actually taking that southbound off-ramp, sliding it to align with a new southbound off-ramp. The southbound off-ramp today comes through the park and ride and gets to the, to what I would call the south side of the park and ride. We're separating it, bringing it to the north side of it, aligning it with the on-ramp, and then creating a signalized pedestrian-controlled intersection, introducing a left turn lane that doesn't exist, and then maintaining that right turn lane that does exist onto the.
So everywhere that there's a crosswalk, in essence, there's no longer going to be a yield sign getting on, getting off of the exit, it's just going to be all traffic signalization?
All signals, except for this location, this does stay, still stay under yield control. And that's, that's what the county wants to do.
Okay, all right, so there still would be a yield sign going away from your property?
Correct, so that heavy, that heavy right would still be.
So the yield, the yield is just getting moved over from one side of the park and ride to the other?
Right, and then, and then we separate all activity in that park and ride and whatever bus activity. It makes a lot more sense, it becomes a park and ride versus a, sort of what it is today.
Yeah, well, I know whenever the, when I, I drive into work, so when you get off and the bus is there, it stops traffic. Danny, can you go back to the other, the other one? Okay, so when we were talking about the, that whole change, right now, they're, you're making the left-hand turn, you're coming down when you're making, and you're coming up to get on, right, there's a yield sign. What's happening there? So it's no longer going to be a yield, it's going to be a left turn, it's going to be a signalization?
Right, so today you have a single lane on Matteawan Road that comes up, where you can make a left onto the ramp, and you have like a channelized right turn lane with a yield sign, correct? So what happens when it goes to signal control? There'll be a dual left turn lane, double stacking, double left turn lane that will run under a protected operation with no opposing traffic, which will feed onto the ramp. And then the right turn, again, when, when the through traffic is running on Matteawan Road, the right turn will run protected.
So there's going to be a dual.
There's two left turn lanes.
Dual left turn?
Correct.
So there'll be a left turn signal?
Correct.
Okay.
Left turn hours.
Okay, and when all of these improvements are happening, right, so my big concern when we started talking about this is, how are we going to maintain traffic flow of seven to eight hundred cars?
Sure.
During, whether it's a day or two, I mean, folks that are sitting here nodding their heads know that if there's an accident on Route 35, that becomes an absolute disaster.
Yeah, so, as, as part of the design plans, there will be detailed staging and traffic control plans. I can tell you, we started to look at that because as I said, we are well into design on this since we are basically in agreement with the county and Turnpike Authority. I can let you know that this is, from a traffic control standpoint, a relatively easy project to maintain traffic.
You know, you're on the record and they're behind you.
Yeah, no, it is, it is so, it is so because really, we have the opportunity basically to come in in the first phase, basically cone off or barrier off our side of the road, do our box outs, our widens, while just maintaining traffic flow as is on the roadway. And then we're able to do something similar on the southbound side, where we can also come in, box off, maintain the one lane of traffic in each direction, and get the southbound lanes in place. And then once that's done, we have a lot of pavement then to play with, where we can maintain two lanes of traffic that's occurring out there as we start to bring the other elements online. So, you know, there'll certainly be periods that'll generally be done off-peak, whether it's midday or night work, where we might need to close something because we're, we're cutting in a drainage ditch or something of that nature. But that's generally done with flagging operations and when traffic, we certainly not during the peak roadway.
So we won't always maintain each way, there may be points in time at some level.
There may be short periods of time. I mean, the intent would be to maintain it. If we can come across with a drainage run, come halfway and maintain two-way traffic, that's what we, that would be our intention. But if there is an efficient way to, to come in real quick, shut something with the cops for, you know, a half hour and do something, but that wouldn't occur any time during or disrupt any peak period, yeah. I, you know, the whole, the, the design intent on something like this, particularly a major piece of infrastructure like this, would be to maintain traffic at, at all times. We certainly wouldn't be doing any detours or road closures.
Okay, so no deal, okay. All right, then coming out of the development, right, so we have 529 units. I always factor in two cars per, you have over a thousand spots, so let's just say you fill with a thousand spots. What is the trips in and out, peak versus non-peak?
Sure, so the, so during the peak hour, exiting that morning, peak hour, seven to thirty, eight thirty, we would expect to see about 150 vehicles exit this site. About 50% of that.
An hour or total?
Total, total in an hour.
Okay, per hour.
And about 50% of that will just go straight across onto the ramp. About 11% of it will make the right, and the remaining will make the left heading down into Old Bridge and, and down towards Aberdeen and Matteawan. So, as I said, all of our, the majority of our traffic wants to go through this intersection anyway, which, which is why it makes sense to establish the access here and improve this intersection, because the intersection isn't operating well today. So it works well for our access and it helps us solve a problem that has existed here. And quite frankly, there has been no plans by the Turnpike Authority or Parkway or Turn, or.
County.
Or county to do any improvements here.
And do you know roughly what the time, time would be on those lights? So is it even across the board, is it coming out of your development and off the Parkway more, is it?
It would prioritize traffic flow along Matteawan Road and particularly the left turn. So it'll have time of day operations. First, in the morning, that left hour will get a lot of green time, and then that'll decrease through the day. The way we've set it up is to minimize the time to the, to the driveway. The driveway, we actually set at level of service D operations, because it's, it's the minor movement and it's a driveway. And that way we maximize and get those Cs and Bs operating on, on the main line. And that's the way you normally time it. I fully expect that we will likely use a GPS clock at, in this design, and we will use a GPS clock in the other signal, and we'll probably coordinate the two systems.
Okay, and then, final question. So for the pedestrians, should somebody want to walk from either your development or Bridge Point or anywhere down Matteawan Road into Lawrence Parkway? They're coming up, the, the crosswalk is, is where, that's on?
So what we have is two things. We have a sidewalk that extends down into the development. So if you're coming from the Green and Old Bridge, any of the new community, you would walk up to the traffic signal, you would cross to the island, you would push a button, you would get a protected phase, and you'd be able to walk across.
Okay, so that's where it is?
Right there. And then we also would be constructing sidewalk and across the, the front of our widening that we're doing in front of the Parkview Meadows. There would be sidewalks, so if you're coming from Parkview Meadows, you'd also pick up that sidewalk, you'd cross the driveway with a pedestrian crossing and pedestrian button, and then cross again. And then we're building this sidewalk piece over here that's missing. So basically, the residential communities will have the opportunity to get to the bridge and cross Matteawan Road safely.
Okay, so you, you all are building all of those sidewalks that are shown up there then?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and that's all, Mammoth, Middlesex County these days is very heavily pedestrian-oriented in terms of making sure that you meet all current ADA requirements, sidewalk wear, sidewalk slopes, as well as audible signals, they, like, it's all bells and whistles these days.
All right, thank you.
And the south signal will be the same.
You're good. Okay, any question, okay, Mr. Petty?
So during peak hours in the morning, is what time, seven thirty to nine?
Basically, seven thirty to eight thirty is, is the peak hour. You know, that can vary any given day, but that's about when it's occurring.
500 units, Eric said about two cars per unit, it's a thousand cars. And you think how many cars are going to leave in that time?
We calculate based upon a data about 150 cars in an hour. So not all your, not all your, on a residential community, your egress, of those that are egressing, starts at five, six o'clock in the morning, continues to the morning.
So that's going to be cars, school buses, people coming in and out?
Vehicles, delivery vehicles, all of that is, is calculated into the data.
It's going to be a mess.
It's, 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 the, the data is accurate, it's been proven, it, it actually reflects New Jersey data as well as national data. And very comfortable that it's a, a very reasonable projection as to what we can expect.
Okay.
And it's probably not much different than what's coming out of Alexandria.
I've seen what's coming out, some of the, on some of the other developments that I drive through on 516 and on some of the other roads, it's, it's crazy.
It's calculated in, and the data is accurate, and again, the, the agencies have all reviewed it, yeah, okay.
Do we have any other questions? Mr. Farrar, go ahead.
I congratulate you on this design, it must have kept you up nights, I'm sure.
Still does. Still it's built.
It's just, it seems to have a flaw where the, the overpass that is going to remain two-lane, so it seems to create a bottleneck. I mean, the, the point where you're going to be coming right here, I'm sorry, could you go to the other side?
Of the other side?
Yeah, the other side.
Go back to the other.
Would you be the southbound side? Yeah. This, this, the queuing space that you have over here doesn't seem to be adequate, and probably back up right onto the, the overpass.
Yeah, so we actually calculated that with the county. It, it's more than adequate. Today, there is no left turn lane, it, it actually stops the through traffic. The left turn lane that we are setting here is actually, is actually what was used to establish where these ramps had to go. So the, the Turnpike's original concept actually was coming in tighter up here. So when we worked with Mammoth County, Middlesex County, that was their big concern. So we established the length of that left turn to make sure that there wasn't a backup out of there and that we set these ramps at a location that maintained that traffic flow and eliminated that problem that exists today.
It is better than what it, it is today, I'm sure, no doubt. How many cars would you say would be able to fit in, in that queue area right there?
About three cars.
Three cars?
Yeah.
So it's guaranteed it's going to back up onto the.
No, it, it'll handle the queue that we're calculating.
All right.
And, and I can tell you that was a, a concern of Mammoth, of Middlesex County engineering. So they've looked at it very closely.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I appreciate your design, don't agree with it. I'm on that road, like I said, many, many years though. And so the, the off-ramp now is, is coming here to a queue.
Correct.
Right in here, there's, there's a queue over here. And these, these lights, will they be, I think the term is articulated? The lights, isn't that the, the term that they use, actuated?
Actuated, yes.
Actuate, I'm sorry, actuated.
Yes, so they'll have, they'll have multiple time of day, timing directives based upon the traffic demands, and they will be fully, fully actuated to respond to traffic.
So they'll be coordinated on?
I, I expect to coordinate the north and south side signals, yes.
Okay, okay. Can we go over to the northbound side now? So again, we have a queue over here, two lanes, and the bridge is over here somewhere, is this location?
The bridge, the physical bridge starts right at this location.
So how many, how many cars are you estimating would be in this, these two lanes, two left-hand lanes, would you say?
We've designed that to handle between 24 to 30 queued cars.
Okay, and the, the traffic flow there is, I think is part of your, your document, says there's a car every two seconds?
Basically, it's eight, seven, eight hundred vehicles per hour, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's what sets, sets that design. And as I said, that was again, a very critical component of understanding and solving so that we get rid of the, the problem you have today, which is everybody that, that is holding up the, the line across the bridge is basically, you know, waiting to make their left. This eliminates that by giving them a queue storage area.
And I, I just wonder, what was, what was the thought process of not using the emergency egress, which is, I think it's, what's it called, Alexandria Drive? What was the thought process in not making that the main egress and entrance instead of this?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One is, as I said, our traffic is coming here anyway, so we have to deal with improving this intersection regardless. The second part is, is the Bridgepoint Condominium Association had a substantial concern about having traffic added, added to Alexander Parkway, and, and certainly respecting their concerns and impacts on that neighborhood was something that was considered by the developer over the years, as well as the fact that the intersection of Alexandria Parkway and, and Matteawan Road really doesn't have the geometry. There's one lane in each direction at that location. We have the park across the street, so there's really not a lot of opportunity to widen across the street into green acres areas, as well as on the south side, again, the, you know, this, this owner owned only a short frontage along that section of Matteawan Road, so it doesn't really have the ability to widen onto the south side without impacting the condominium association as well as the Meadows and Parkview. So it all pointed to this being the logical location to, to solve it with, with emergency access maintained at that other location.
I understand this has already been pre-approved as part of an agreement. So this is already a done deal, is what we're understanding?
I, I leave it to the attorneys to present, but it was.
What do you mean?
Part discussed in the settlement agreement.
There's, there's no changing this design at this point?
Yeah, the, the improvements to this, these intersections are included as part of the settlement's agreements as well, yes.
So there's no changing that. So there's 140 something cars, you said, you're coming out of the development?
In the morning, over the course of that, that peak hour, about 140 to 150 cars.
But in that intersection here, you've got over 4,000?
In that intersection, probably in all directions.
I'm just, oh, right here is over 4,000 cars.
In the peak hour, one, two, probably about 2,000 vehicles through the peak hour? Based on, based on the total of all approaches. The southbound approach in the area is about 2, 300 through, through vehicles. Coming off the ramp is, is less. It's really that heavy northbound movement in the morning that's the highest flow.
Yeah. I'm concerned also about on Matteawan Cheesecake and Cliffwood.
Yes.
I take that all the time, I'm in there all the time, 6:30, 7 o'clock. And if there's any kind of a traffic buildup over here, it spills out all the way down on Matteawan Road to the intersection of Morris Town.
And, and Morris Town, yeah, so this should clear that up. That, that queue that occurs today will be cleared up with this signal. Going from an F level of service to a C level of service will clear up that queue.
I sure hope you're right.
It will.
And, and, Mr. Jefferson, just another point, you know, with regard to these intersections, while it's part of the settlement agreement and while it's, you know, the township's participating, they're really under the authority of the county and the, the Turnpike. We, the township has very limited involvement, I mean, aside from wanting to be a party to it and, you know, signing off, it's really the, the county and the, excuse me, the county and the Turnpike Authority who dictate how it gets changed and modified.
Now, will that, will that traffic light on intersection on Cliffwood and Morris Town, will that be actuated with these, and coordinated with these other lights?
I haven't looked at that or discussed that yet with the county. I'm not sure that that one can be tied into these two, but it's certainly something that the county may ask us to look at when we get to the design of the south signal. It's, it's, it's not hard to do these days, we do it by, by GPS clock. And once the control is on GPS clock, you can do an awful lot of coordination.
Yeah, I'm sure that there's, there's a lot, lot of concerns going down to Lawrence Harbor that these kind people are going to have concerns about too, so, but thank you very much.
The, the two, the two, the interchange itself will be substantially improved. We're not only mitigating our traffic, we're solving some issues that, that the county and Turnpike quite frankly haven't put on their radar yet because it just hasn't hit the priority. But at some point, they're going to have to deal with it, we're dealing with it for them.
Ability of increasing the lanes on, on the bridge across the.
Now, we had looked, we had looked at that, it's, the way they redecked it and, and modified it, there's really just no substructure that really allows any kind of a, a simple thing. You're either giving up the sidewalk, which the Turnpike and the, and the counties, certainly the county's not willing to do, or, or the, the two lanes remains. And again, we don't need two lanes from a capacity standpoint. What we needed was the distance, which luckily we have, to develop the, the turn. we have, to develop the turn lanes and the separation of the movements at the traffic signal. So the, the location of the interchange ramp itself from the actual structure of the bridge really works to our advantage to get the lane capacity that we need to solve that issue.
Okay, any other questions from my left side? Mr. Lenny?
So, listening to your testimony, I appreciate it. You said the last traffic study was done in 2022. That was in the middle of COVID. So that concerns me. That's why I think our professionals.
Basically, we were out of it. Schools were back in. And then we, that data, as I said, was compared to and verified with the prior data that we had. So it's not in a vacuum. It was looked at with the prior data. In fact, quite frankly, these, these improvements evolved based on earlier traffic studies for much higher levels of development on this site that were done back in 2019 and 18, when we were looking at more office on this site when there was a market. So quite frankly, we've actually maintained the same level of improvements that we've been identifying since the early 2000s, and we've reduced the size of the project in terms of traffic generation.
I appreciate that, but I think the township should have an accurate record. Like you said, we're going to operate as a B, correct? I think if it moves down to a C, it's still not failing, but I think the township should have an accurate record of what we're going to be at time of construction. So I would, you know, highly recommend that, you know, we do a current study. I oversee the township commuter parking lots. So we've doubled parking since March of '22 to today. We're still at below COVID numbers. We're running about 80% currently, but there are a lot more people commuting back to, you know, their jobs wherever they work. So I, that's why I think it's important to have an accurate record for that. So I would hope you'll commit to doing that.
Mr. Chairman, and your attorney, can I be a condition of preliminary approval if preliminary approval were granted? So it's part of resolution compliance.
I mean, the applicant, if, if the board does act favorably, this is a preliminary only. They have to come back for final. I think if I'm hearing Mr. Pachino correctly, he's, he's asking if that can be something they can submit when they come back for final. And I, I think that's a reasonable.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, you know. I, I do. I think that's, that's good for everybody up here, the township itself, and then the residents. You just have a clear understanding where we're going to be at. Moving down to, I'm not involved with the MUA, but I know, I believe they have an access point where the taper is going to start on the south side. Was that taken into consideration?
We are taking that into consideration.
They'll have like a depressed curb or something that they'll be able to access that?
Maintain proper access at that location, yes.
Perfect. Let me start checking my questions also. I don't double, double down here. Traffic, growth, MUA. Oh, so we, we touched on the emergency gate for the emergency access. I believe it was going to be directed toward you to talk about that?
Yeah, you know, as Redeem had said, you know, we'll comply with what emergency services wants. I don't know, whatever they're using in the municipality that's, that's works for emergency services. Certainly, we want emergency services to be able to get into the site conveniently. That's typical to a residential community. They also asked that we widen that, that connection to a 20-foot wide, and we'll do that also, which would actually be conducive to if, if that unique event occurred that shut down the boulevard, certainly could be open to traffic at the discretion of the municipal emergency services. So we have no problem with that.
I appreciate that. The traffic signals, would they be like on Lawrence Parkway equipped with the transponders? So when a fire truck's coming, they kind of change the lights so they have a clear path?
Yeah, so emergency services did ask for that in their memo. I did see that. We'll just need to know what they're using. Middlesex County does allow us to do that. They, the emergency services will have to enter into an agreement with Middlesex County to maintain that infrastructure once it's built, because the county won't maintain it. If they've got that in place already, it'll be easier. Otherwise, we'll have to work with them to get that agreement in place. But the county does permit that.
Okay.
The signals will be county signals, not Turnpike signals.
Okay.
Maintained by the county.
Maintained by the county. You talked about the sidewalk going in front of the apartments. Does that connect all the way to Alexandria?
It does not. We, we end it at their, basically at their driveway. I don't know if there's anything remnants of something in the past that continues, but we end it where our construction ends. And that's because the county, when you do something like this, looks to do full, complete streets.
Construction, gotcha. All right. Well, it's a start. You know, we're getting the sidewalk further down for the residents. You know, Councilman DePalma touched on, you know, the pedestrian traffic and having the crosswalks. You know, I, I believe he talked about that was because we've had residents come to council meetings talking about, you know, being able to navigate. We have some residents that walk from a pretty far distance away. So to see the signalized crosswalks, I think is really important.
Yeah, this, this'll, this'll start to do some complete streets and some safe solutions here at both sides of the interchange. It'll certainly have a complete sidewalk all the way down at Cliffwood Road on the other side. At this location, it'll start to tie things together that hopefully the county can pick up on in the future.
Okay. I appreciate it. That's all I have right now. Okay, are we all done on that side? We're all good? Okay. We're open to the public right now? Any questions for the traffic engineer? The category is traffic and questions only.
Andrew Linfanti, I'm a resident at Bridgepoint. My, I was going to reiterate the same thing that the study was done in 2022, the last traffic study, and it was COVID, and majority of people, I, for myself, I worked at healthcare. So I was the only one basically in our community that was leaving to go to work every day. Everyone else was home, bunkered in their houses. So to say it was done in '22 is not giving you a fair assessment of the situation. I could say just for one alone, last Friday, I went to come out of Bridgepoint on Alexandria, and I have never waited so long to make the left turn to go to the Parkway. I had to wait a good three to four minutes before I could get out. And I've been living there now 19 years, and I have never waited that long to get out. And the other question I have is these roadway, I guess more of a statement than a question. These roadway improvements are hopefully improvements need to be done before they get any CO to those buildings. Because otherwise, we will have no quality of life in Bridgepoint if these, this construction to the roadways is not done prior. And I hope that there are help to that, because it's going to be really miserable if that's not the case. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Another question for the traffic engineer?
Judy, I'm also in Bridgepoint. How long between this construction being done and the other side of the Parkway? Because if you're not doing them at the same time or close to it, the backup on the other side of the Parkway is going to go right through this intersection every day. And what's this going to cause? It's going to be a nightmare because they're not going to be able to turn because nobody's going to be able to go straight on the other side. It's, I mean, I come out at 8:30 in the morning and it's backed up. So it's not just in rush hour. It's all day long. And I don't understand how you can't do them at the same time because the other side of the Parkway, as I say, they're still trying to turn, make a left to go south. The car's back up right through this intersection. And that's my concern about this, if they're not done at the same time. Do we have a, anybody thought about that part of it?
The differential timing is really going to be up to the Turnpike Authority. The southside design is a lot more complicated because it involves the park and ride.
Yep.
So we do expect that that's going to be a much lengthier review and approval process with the Turnpike Authority, as well as how they want to, what they're going to want a construction stage that. So we're not going to be able to control that to a great extent. Certainly, there'd be more efficiency cost-wise for my client to build them both at the same time, but we fully expect that that's not going to happen, given the way government works these days.
I get it, but this is going to be, when it's done, this looks great. But how long between the two? Do we have any clue?
Yes. The first phase is done before the first unit moves in.
Yep.
The second phase is done before 265, see, the 265th unit is issued. So half, half the project will await the second phase.
But how long is that? How long between the two phases? I don't know how long it takes to build 260 units. I have no clue.
It's a question of how long it takes to build and occupy them.
Yep. So it's, yeah. That time plane, this is going to be a disaster.
Well, and I think, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think from the testimony that was provided is that's the maximum time period that can be impressed. But the, I think the applicant's witnesses testified, they would obviously want to do it closer to time, depending on how they can get the Turnpike Authority. So at maximum, it's going to be, the first phase is going to be done before the first person moves in, and the second will be done halfway through. But it could be sooner. It depends on Turnpike Authority and depends on the applicant. Because it makes, as the applicant's witnesses testified, it's better scale, you know, cost-wise for them to get it done at the same time rather than.
Agreed. And Cattrell Road is six months late.
Yeah.
And it's still a nightmare every day. So, and Glassworks, aren't they building where they're not, they're no longer doing commercial, they're now putting in more residential. So I don't know how many more units are going in there, but that should be figured into our traffic study also.
It has been. It's, it's actually a reduction at that location in traffic.
He represents that.
I understand. I heard that. But when you're saying you're going to have more condos up there, they're going to come this way to the Parkway. And when Route 9 has an accident, we're done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, close the public portion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You.
We have nothing further in terms of direct testimony at this point.
Okay, could open up to public for general comments? See no hands? Close that portion?
So we've had all the testimony. Mr. Chairman, if you want to make a quick summation as to what a vote in favor of the application would be, this is a favor, a vote in favor of this application would be granting preliminary major subdivision approval and preliminary major site plan approval with the C variances requested, specifically, as I went through in depth earlier, the technical variance with regard to the phasing. These are, this once again, just to remind the board, this is all part of a Whispering Woods settlement agreement that entered into originally back, the settlement agreement deals with the township's third round affordable housing compliance, where this is, the terms of this development was agreed to by the township and approved by the court back 10 to 15 years ago. We did have, you know, subsequent negotiations and agreed to a revised concept plan, which is what this Whispering Woods hearing is for. The major, just as a reminder, because it has been a couple hearings, major, the major issue there, which this board expressed their concern, and the applicant complied and addressed that concern, was when the affordable housing units, or at least a portion of those, were located at the below of the site. Now, we've heard at this, you know, with this application and the modification, those have been integrated into the, the entire site. And actually, as one of the conditions of approval, the applicant is agreeing to put a deed restriction on that portion of the property below the creek. So the approval will grant, will be granting, like I said, preliminary and major subdivision and major site plan approval. That is only preliminary. Most of the applications we have heard, and I just want to explain it to the board members, have been both preliminary and final, meaning that's, this is it. What we're approving here is preliminary, meaning, as you heard, they're going to work with our professionals. They're going to come back with a, a final version of the site plan to come and subdivision to present to the board. It'll be back before the board showing that and showing how they address those concerns raised by the board members as well as the professionals. And at that time, you would make a, a vote on whether or not you want to grant final sub, final approval. The conditions I have that has been discussed, and I just want to go through and make sure if there was any on the first hearing. See any? So the conditions I have of approval, being one, in general, with regard to the board professionals' reports, the applicant agrees to work with the board professionals on all the comments identified in there and work out which ones they will be complying with, modifying and addressing one way or another. And if they can't comply, we'll be working with the board's professionals to address those before they come back to final approval. As I just mentioned, they agreed to, while there may be some conservation easements required by the DEP, the applicants agreed to deed restrict the portion below the creek. The final form, I will leave that to be determined by the township. Where can be worked out to the town, whether that's a deed restriction, an easement, or something along those lines. But it will be addressed to keep that where it won't be developed. The applicant has agreed to do a updated traffic count, but that would be conducted and brought to the board prior to final, final approval. And as well, the applicant agreed to work with the township's emergency services to determine what type of gate needs to be located at the emergency access road. And that is what I have for conditions of approval. So a vote in favor would be granting that. And once again, like I said, you know, this is part of a settlement approval. So while a lot of the, a lot of other kind of applications, the board has a little bit more sway, a little bit more discretion, I shouldn't say, sorry, discretion's really, this one is something that has been mandated, has been settled by the township and approved by the courts as part of its affordable housing. So the board's view on this is, or discretion on this is a lot limited.
I know that the, that the attorney, they did note the receipt of the letter from the fire department and acknowledgement relative to the required deliverables here. And should that be incorporated?
Yes, I, thank you. The, the same terminology for the, for the condition where they would, the applicant will agree to work with the township professionals to address one way or the other, the comments identified in the reports. The also, that will also include the fire district's report dated May 8, 2025.
Right. And we agreed to comply with all of the requirements on pages two and three of that report. And on page one, we indicated what we, what we are proposing in response to that.
Okay. And then that's just going to be part of when we come back for final, just to address that again.
Okay. We're looking for a motion.
I'll move it.
Second. We have a second?
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyser?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time, and.
You're welcome.
Took a couple nights, but we got through it.
Thanks for coming back. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
Oh, yes. We also do the, the general public comment that we, for any members of the public want to make any comments that's not on the pending application.
Okay. We'll open it up for general public comments.
I hope that in the future, Mr. Altiere doesn't come back and say, I want to build 500 more units on that plot, just like they're doing in Glassworks. They started with a small little complex, and it's just building and building and building. They're going to need their own zip code. And in La Mer and Sayerville, that place is a monstrosity as well. It's just dangerous. It's, the status of living is gone downhill. Old Bridge is becoming a mess. It's, there's nothing wrong with leaving vacant land vacant and green. Thank you very much.
Thank you for.
For your children, your grandchildren, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, any, any other comments? No? Okay. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Over.
Move it. Okay, and second?
Mr. Sonnenberg?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.